Can we please quiet down? Thank you. Welcome to the May 7th regular meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members. Brotman?
Here.
Garpetian?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Asatrian?
Here. Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with the ruling of justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabreli No Tangwa people. In the spirit of the recent May Day observance, let us take a moment to honor the contributions and rights of workers within our community. May we reaffirm our commitment to advocating for fair labor practices, equitable working conditions, and the dignity of all individuals in the workforce. Let us carry forward the momentum of May Day, remaining mindful of the challenges faced by workers in our city and seeking to address them with compassion and resolve. May discussions today be guided by a shared commitment to fostering economic justice, equality, and respect for all. Thank you.
And may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the May 7th 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 2nd, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next is agenda preview.
Good evening, Mayor Asatrian, members of City Council. Next week's meetings will start again in the afternoon with a special meeting. We have two items on that agenda. The first would be session number three of our proposed fiscal year 2024/25 citywide budget. And the second item will be an ordinance amending the 2023 Glendale Building and Safety Code and adoption of amended findings. For the evening City Council meeting, we have four consent items. The first item is from Public Works regarding award of a construction contract for the Shoal Canyon perimeter fencing replacement project, followed by another award of professional services agreement for the Montrose parking analysis and update of the employee parking program. And then there's one additional one from Community Services and Parks related to an amendment of $50,000 for the elderly nutritional program. We also may have one adoption of ordinance amending title authority of the municipal code related to the standards for design review, entitlement processes, parking requirements for certain uses, and miscellaneous zoning code cleanups. And we'll have one final action item that evening from the City Attorney's Office related to the consideration of modifying the nomination process for boards and commissions.
Thank you. I know that some months ago I had brought up us having these previews online. Does staff have any updates on?
Madam Mayor, you're right. I'll have to follow up and see if we have made any headway in that effort, but it's on our list of things to do. I'll keep you posted.
All right. Thank you. Next item?
Next is a proclamation designating May 2024 as Older Americans Month.
And we have Eileen Isayan from CSP Staff from the ARC. It's like you have others with you.
Sure.
If I may read the proclamation, then you can make your remarks. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Glendale's 45,000-plus older adults who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas throughout their wealth of life, experience, and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older adults improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And where our City of Glendale must ensure that older adults have the resources and support they need to stay involved in the community, reflecting on our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. And now therefore, I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month. And we have Eileen with us.
Thank you, Mayor Asatrian, and members of council. Thank you for the proclamation. To celebrate Older Americans Month, we would like to invite you and everyone that's watching to our Senior Street Fest, which will take place next week, Thursday, at Partra Plaza. The invitations are going around. And I have with me Edgar Hakopian from our Senior Services Committee accepting the proclamation, and Maggie Kavarian, our manager, accepting the proclamation. Thank you.
Before I come down for a quick photo and to give this to you, for the Senior Fest, have we reached out to the senior buildings in our city to invite them?
Mayor Asatrian, we have. We have gone by to for our senior needs assessment and informed them of the event. But we will be visiting them this Thursday to do a needs assessment onsite, so we will be taking the flyers with us to inform them. Most of the participants we have in our programs are from the building, so they are aware of our event that's happening. But we will be visiting this Thursday and I believe Friday to do all of it.
All right. Wonderful. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Okay. I'm gonna conclude that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Mayor Asatrian, we have a public comment on this item. It's by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. On May 26th, I will be 82 years young. And all I need is just one day to make that acknowledgement. I don't need 30 days. Actually, 31 in May. Why? Why? If you're gonna make an announcement, we don't need making... What's the big deal? I come here all the time. I could physically make it. We don't need 30 days. One day. After all, if I can make it here every week, try to. All you need is one day of acknowledgement if you're gonna do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next item?
Next item is a proclamation designating May 2024 as Building Safety Month.
All right. And we have with us our building official, Ara Salkusian, Community Development Director. All right. You'll introduce everyone, right?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Galanian, before I read the proclamation, it looks like you had some...
Made an error. It's on the item E3E.
All right. Thank you all for being here today and for all your work. I'll read off the proclamation and then you can make any comments you'd like. Whereas it is well documented that each year thousands of lives have been saved and millions of dollars of property damage have been averted through the enactment of building codes. And whereas the City of Glendale has been adopting building codes for the well-being of our community since 1913 to protect our citizens from the effects of earthquakes, windstorms, fires, floods, and more recently to ensure accessibility, energy, and resource conservation to create a sustainable community. Whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Now therefore, I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Mr. Salkusian?
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for acknowledging and supporting Building Safety Division as well as the profession in general. Building Safety Month is an international campaign that promotes building safety and raises awareness about building codes. All communities need to have and have to follow the building codes. And these building codes are helping us to save our citizens from natural disasters as earthquakes, fire, collapse, and so on. This year's theme, as you mentioned, is Mission Possible, and it includes five special separate weekly themes. Understanding the mission, preparing building safety plan, learning from professionals, engaging your community, and celebrating building safety success. This year, we are going to have, next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, 15th, we are going to have a large event for the community at our courtyard. And also, on 29th, we will have Listen to Industry session, which will mean homeowners, business owners, design professionals may join us and come and hear us about our improvements and our changes, and also have a chance to express their issues and ask questions. Last week, six days ago, was one-year anniversary, me joining City of Glendale. And it's a great place to work. And I wanna express my gratitude and appreciation to this team, Building Safety Team, these incredible people that help my job to be joyfully meaningful. Thanks to their hard work throughout this time, we managed to accomplish many, many improvements in our work efficiency and customer service. And more improvements to come, and I'm so happy to see their enthusiasm about new changes to come. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have any comments?
Thank you.
We wanna thank you as well. I wanna... I'm new, and you're new, and welcome you. And hopefully, you know, we visit your department very often, and hopefully, in the very near future, we will have in our budget to upgrade everything in your department. So the work environment will be a little bit more friendly for the employees as well. And we appreciate everything all of you guys do and take care of people's business in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll come down. Next item?
Next is a proclamation designating the second week of May 2024 as Lung Cancer Action Week.
And we have Francis Mojika Maxine Tatlon Gari from the American Lung Association. Are they here? As well as I, where turquoise ambassador Rodney Mardirosian. Rodney's actually the one that reached out. He's a resident, a well-known doctor, if I may say, who also requested that we light City Hall in turquoise, which is happening tonight as we sit here. So, welcome to our City Hall. I'm gonna read the proclamation when we will have an opportunity. Whereas Lung Force Initiative celebrates 10 years of progress to defeat lung cancer in 2024. And whereas about every two minutes, a person in the United States is diagnosed with lung cancer. And whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths. Whereas lung cancer screening saves life, and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened. And whereas public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection. And whereas Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer. And now therefore, I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim second week in May as Lung Cancer Action Week throughout the city, and encourage all residents of Glendale to learn more about lung cancer, risk factors, and early detection, and take action. Please welcome.
We just wanna thank you. We appreciate your generosity with illumination and participation in this proclamation. This is a national campaign, and you're joining a lot of cities across the nation, and we're so proud to partner with you. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, if there were three things that you could tell everyone to do to prevent lung cancer, what would it be?
Oh, my gosh. Early screening is key. As you read in the proclamation, lung cancer is still the number-one killing cancer in the U.S. of men and women. So early screening is really, really important. Policies supporting smoke-free spaces, supporting American Lung Association in the Clean Air Act, all of these things contribute to lung health overall. And everyone can go to lung.org and find out different ways to support clean hair and lung health.
Thank you for your efforts, and thank you for being here.
How about stop smoking?
There are a lot of people who, I don't wanna get political here, but big tobacco do target our young and our communities of color, and start kids very young before they even know what they're doing. And they label things like bubble gum, and there are tactics to really target young children. And so those people who have an addiction of smoking needs our support, and they can find sensation programs and support on lung.org as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you for the work.
Next item?
Next is an update on Bus Rapid Transit Project by Metro staff.
Mayor Asatrian, members of City Council, as you know, the Bus Rapid Transit have been in the works for a while. You have previously gotten updates on the status of this project. Metro and its consultant have been continuing, have continued working on this project, and they're almost at 30% design. They are ready. Metro is ready to bring forward a development agreement to be executed. But before we do that, I wanted to provide an opportunity for Metro to present their latest plans and an update on the status of the project, as well as provide an opportunity for council members to ask questions, again, before we bring the development agreement before you, for approval. With that, I turn it over to Anthony DeFranza, Senior, the Metro's Director of Construction Management, for the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to provide a status update on the project. A lot has happened since we last presented to this council, so appreciate the opportunity. I'm here to talk specifically about the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project. Metro has a plan to make it easier to get around L.A. on public transportation, and this project is a key element in that plan. It'll provide a new way to ride between the San Fernando and San Gabriel Valleys. This map on the screen shows an overall project alignment. The different colors represent different bus lane configurations, and I'll talk a bit more detail about that through the Glendale section. But important to note, on the west side of the project, starting in North Hollywood at the terminus of the B and G lines, it runs east through City of L.A., then Burbank, then Glendale, back into the City of L.A. before getting back on the 134 to go to Pasadena, where it ends at the Pasadena City College after making a possible connection at the existing A-line. The project is a Measure M-funded project and has a project budget of $317 million, which is a combination of Measure M funds and SB1 state grant funds. The Metro Board approved the proposed project and certified the final EIR back in April of 2022. Since then, we've advanced design to a preliminary engineering status or 25% level design back in December of last year. And we coordinated with all four cities along the jurisdiction or along the alignment, sharing that 25% design plans and in receipt of comments back. This corridor gets 700,000 daily trips, of which only 2% are currently public transit. So this is one of the most heavily traveled corridors in the County of L.A. without a premium transit service. And on opening day in 2027, we anticipate this BRT project to draw 30,000 daily riders. So that'll be a marked increase over the current public transit users in the corridor. The project objectives, as defined in the Metro Board-approved EIR, advance a premium transit service that's more competitive with private auto travel to get some of those 700,000 daily travelers onto public transportation, improve accessibility for disadvantaged communities, improve transit access to major activities and employment centers along the alignment of which Glendale represents a number, enhance connectivity to Metro and other regional rail transit services. So I mentioned the G and B, the G and B lines, the A-line in Pasadena, and we have the MetroLink station in Burbank. Provide improved passenger comfort and convenience, and support community plans and transit-oriented community goals. And the project will represent significant savings over existing public transit options. The dedicated bus lanes, which will make up a majority of the corridor, will improve service reliability, speed, and allow for more frequency. Those dedicated bus lanes have the added benefit of, as congestion worsens over time, that worsening congestion won't impact the BRT benefits. Enhance customer service, promotes higher ridership, and improve safety by reducing conflicts between cars, bikes, and buses. There's a lot of bike lane improvements, notably on Glen Oaks and then in Colorado, on Colorado Boulevard and Eagle Rock. So the 20-mile alignment has approximately 22, well, it has 22 enhanced stations. Transit signal priority will be deployed throughout the corridor, which improves the green signals for buses to improve speed and reliability. All door boarding on the buses, improvements to existing bike lanes, and importantly, we intend to operate with zero-emission electric buses. So this is a zoom-in of the alignment in the Glendale section. And of the 22 stations, seven and a half are in Glendale. The Glen Oaks Boulevard and Alameda Avenue Station, One Direction is in Glendale, One Direction is in Burbank. But a huge chunk of the project runs through Glendale. The colors indicate the different running configurations of the bus lanes, where green represents median-running dedicated bus lanes, where the dedicated bus lane is adjacent to the existing landscape median along Glen Oaks. Then, as it turns and runs on Central Avenue through downtown Glendale and on Broadway right past us, now it converts to a side-running configuration, where the dedicated bus lane runs adjacent to a parking lane. And so the median-running configuration and side-running configuration essentially convert an existing travel lane to a dedicated bus lane, but are configurations that preserve the majority of parking by allowing those parking lanes to exist in concert with the dedicated bus lanes. The intent is to preserve a majority of the landscape median along Glen Oaks, so mature trees and the existing landscape median ought to stay. This is a rendering showing the median-running configuration on Glen Oaks Boulevard. Off to the right of the screen, you see a rendering of a station concept, and then the red dedicated bus lanes showing how those mix with the existing traffic. This, very close to us on Broadway and Glendale Boulevard, shows how the station will be built in a more sidewalk-constrained configuration. This is one of the most geometrically constrained areas, and so the station will be built on the existing sidewalk. In this case, there's a small bulb out of the sidewalk such that the area for pass-through pedestrians and folks waiting at the station is a bit bigger. But you can see here that the dedicated bus lane pulls up adjacent to the station, and then as it pulls away from the station, the sidewalk curb goes back towards the buildings to accommodate parked cars adjacent to the curb. This is a conceptual rendering showing the kit of parts, and this is in the spirit of creating a rail-like experience for passengers. So the system-wide design folks within Metro essentially tried to replicate as much of the light rail station amenities as they could for BRT service. And they've defined this kit of parts, which is modular, to allow us, as we finalize the design of the project in coordination with city staffs, to essentially size the structure to fit within existing mature trees or to avoid conflicts with existing infrastructure that we don't want to move. So modular, flexible, to accommodate the particular conditions. So as I indicated previously, we have 25% level design that's under review by City of Glendale staff and has also been shared with Burbank, Pasadena, and City of L.A. This month, at the Metro Board meeting, we intend to recommend awarding the final design contract, which will allow us to bring on our final design consultant to take that 25% level design, again, in collaboration and coordination with city staffs, all the way to approved for construction drawings. And then this fall, we intend to bring a recommendation to the Metro Board to award a CMGC, or Construction Manager General Contractor, contract, such that as soon as the design packages are approved, we can start construction. And our intent is to be in Revenue Operations Service at some point in 2027, hopefully in the first half, but we'll see how things go. My information, and any questions about the project that don't come up tonight can be addressed, here's my contact information. And before we leave, we wanted to take the opportunity, I wanted to bring up my colleague, Hannah Brunel, who's with Metro's First Last Mile Group. There's a First Last Mile planning study that's ongoing that supports this project, and I wanted her to talk through that. and I, I wanted her to talk through that.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name's Hannah Brunel. I'm a senior manager with Metro's First Last Mile Planning Program. So I'm here to just give a brief update on the First Last Mile Plan. Our team has kicked off efforts for the First Last Mile Plan for the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Corridor. We anticipate this planning effort to be approximately 12 months. I'll go over a few of our schedule milestones that we anticipate. And this plan will follow the Metro Board-adopted methodology and process for First Last Mile Plans, and that process will culminate in the development of a project list that will identify station access and safety projects that improve comfort and accessibility for people walking, biking, taking wheelchairs or other wheel devices to Metro stations, really looking to improve safe and dignified pathways for people to access transit through walking and biking. And you can see a couple of key activities highlighted here on the slide. Really critical to our process is CBO partnerships and community engagement. I'll touch on that a little bit. We will be partnering with one CBO in the City of Glendale, and we'll be partnering with four CBOs overall in each of the four cities along the alignment. And we will be doing, you know, this plan and process with local agency coordination. So we actually just met with city staff last week in Glendale to kick off the First Last Mile Planning Effort, and our consultant team is, is working underway to start this process. We will also be conducting walk audits. I'll touch on that a little bit as well. We would really appreciate if you're interested to join us out in doing a walk audit of the station area, and also conducting significant data analysis and existing conditions, really, again, leading to the development of a project list to identify safety and access improvement projects around the station area. Oh, and I'll mention too, you can see this graphic on the slide, we identify pedestrian projects within a half mile of the station area, and we look at biking and wheeled projects up to three miles from the station area. So a little bit about First Last Mile. You can see the definition here on the slide. So this is really a community-based process. We're looking to improve the metro transit experience from door to door. So looking to improve transit riders' experience, getting to and from metro stations, again, walking, biking, other non-motorized transportation, really looking to help improve the transfer experience, create safe and dignified pathways, and also enhance routes that connect directly to station areas. And so the next two slides, these will just give you a snapshot of the schedule milestones to anticipate for the First Last Mile Plan. So we will be identifying one station to develop a First Last Mile Plan in the City of Glendale. We'll be selecting one station in each of the four cities along the alignment. So we're currently conducting a station identification assessment to prioritize one station to conduct this planning effort. Our team has also kicked off existing conditions analysis, and as I mentioned, we'll be conducting walk audits. Really, the purpose is to get out in the field, identify key barriers and challenges. We anticipate doing this in coordination with our community partners, as well as inviting the public and council members to join us if you are interested. And we'll also be developing the pathway network. This will identify the key streets that connect to the transit station, where we will be identifying projects. So we'll, you'll see this example on the screen. You'll see the primary pathways that connect directly to the transit station in the dark blue color, and secondary pathways in light blue that connect users to neighborhoods and other key destinations around the station area. And really critical to our process, again, is community engagement. We'll be conducting a series of engagement activities, starting in the summer, and really going throughout this process. And really key to the First Last Mile Plan is the project list development. So once we collect all of the data and we talk to the community, that will culminate in the development of a project list. And then we'll be developing the draft First Last Mile Plan and anticipate a final plan to be available likely in the April timeframe next year. And we will bring that plan for adoption to the Metro Board. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions on this, or also Anthony's presentation as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Do my colleagues have any questions?
There we go, all right. Wait, which, which word?
Well, but why don't you go first? It's your Mr. Metro.
No, that's fine. No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. We've been hearing about the BRT for a long time now. So a couple of things that just came up while you were presenting and Hannah was presenting, I made notes on. You're talking, you say you're bringing a development agreement to Glendale for basically the work that's going to happen on our rights of way. When is that happening?
Yeah, so we've submitted or provided a draft of the, we're calling it a cooperative agreement, that defines the kind of working relationship between city staff and Metro staff, and also importantly, provides a ladder, an escalation ladder, if, at the staff level, we're not able to resolve many conflicts. So we're awaiting comments back from city staff on that cooperative agreement, at which point it's in your court when you'd like to, when city staff would like to present that to you.
Okay. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, you're going to do the same thing with the other areas.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I'm thinking specifically about Burbank. What, what's the current state of play? Do you, are you confident that the Burbank City Council will approve a development agreement?
We do think we'll get there. One of the really important consequences of having an approved cooperative agreement is city staff time spent on the project is reimbursed by Metro as a project cost, and that's difficult or impossible to facilitate until that cooperative agreement is in place. So that's a real big incentive, we think, for the cities to sign on. There are two outstanding issues we're discussing with the City of Burbank, and we think we're close to resolution, but what they presented to their council last month wasn't yet agreed to, and so I think we have a, our work cut out for us to get a council-agreed-to document finalized.
Okay, but we're not going to go to shared, what do we call it? Mixed flow? We're not going to end up with mixed flow in Burbank?
No, I don't think so. And we think the cooperative agreement can be approved independent of even that decision, right? So the cooperative agreement really outlines, again, the working relationship between city staff and Metro staff, and so we think it's important to establish that, and then it provides a path to work through issues that remain unresolved, like mixed flow versus dedicated lanes on Olive.
Right, okay.
Let me just quick, quickly step in. Thank you today for having us. It's Mark Van Gessel, Executive Officer at Metro. Just wanted to highlight, we are working with Burbank. They actually were the first one to bring their MCA to the board. We do believe we're going to get a signed MCA with them, so I want to highlight that. And as Anthony said, the key of that MCA is to allow the city to get reimbursed for their time, to highlight escalation ladders to resolve problems, and, and not really define the project of exactly what goes where and things like that, but more of a outline of a cooperative agreement to get us to, to move forward.
Okay. The next thing is, what, when do you expect to be breaking ground here in Glendale, and what kinds of, how long will there be disruption to Glen Oaks, Central, and Broadway, our three corridors?
Yeah, it's a great question. One of the reasons we're, we're delivering the construction of the project via CMGC, which is Construction Manager General Contractor, is it's a contracting method that allows us to bring the contractor team onboard before the design is finalized. So a lot of our ability to actually break ground in the city depends on our ability to get the design finalized in coordination and collaboration with your city staff. So our designer is going to start work as soon as Metro Board approves their, their contract, and we anticipate a 16- to 18-month design duration. But within that design duration, there are opportunities to start construction earlier. So if a jurisdiction or a segment of a jurisdiction is approved for construction, our CMGC contract allows us to negotiate an early works package with the contractor and start that construction right away. And the benefit of bringing them on early is that they will help the designer and Metro develop these packages in a way that makes them most efficient to construct, minimizing all the impacts to the public, right? We want to be in and out as quickly as possible, but the amount of construction on Glen Oaks is not equivalent to a light rail project, but it's, it's going to be a substantial impact as we build the station bulb outs and do the restriping and repaving that's required.
So ballpark, in and out, are we talking about three months? Are we talking about six months?
I think in a unique, in each unique location, I think we're talking about three months. But over the entire Glendale section, we'll likely be in Glendale for 12 to 18 months.
Okay, working on different sections, okay. Sorry, last thing was First Last Mile. I, I'm just, I'm a little confused, because I think it was probably two years ago that we had seen a proposal for a First Last Mile project around the Grand, I think Grandview, Sonora. I don't know if anybody remembers the details of that, but we discussed it, there were some designs, drawings, and it all looked exciting. Is that, what was that?
Well, I wonder.
Scott Tito, do either of you have recollection of that?
Or does anyone on our side? I mean, Daniel wasn't here, otherwise I would put him on the spot, but I, I remember seeing presentations on it.
I wasn't on the council, welcome. I wasn't on the council back then, but I do remember Metro, I participated in a meeting where they were actually going through the design and the routes. I have a set of questions based off of that, whatever memory I have of that meeting, but there actually, there was a presentation by Metro way over two and a half years ago.
Well, can I clarify one thing? So the First Last Mile Plan results, as Hannah indicated, in a list of projects, but they're not currently funded as part of the BRT project. So what it represents is a plan of well-developed ideas that present opportunities for cities to go after grant funding to implement. So it's possible that what you're remembering was a First Last Mile document that presented a, a plan, but not the associated funding to implement.
Do you remember, do you remember that?
Could have been MetroLink, because they were thinking of a station at Grandview.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's what you're thinking of, but I know that was something.
I remember hearing that Metro was funding this, that we were going to get all this great First Last Mile stuff, and it was going to be paid for by Metro as part of the BRT project, and we saw these beautiful plans. So I don't know, maybe I was dreaming.
Might have been the bike lanes, because there is a big bike lane component, especially along Glen Oaks.
Yeah, this was outside of Glen Oaks. This was like, it, it went around, it was like Grandview, Sonora, in that area, right around, I think Franklin Elementary or something. I, I forget exactly what it was.
We can, I mean, we can look into it, yeah. Yeah, I think just from our perspective, we're, we're not aware of it, but I think, yeah, we can certainly look into it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, apologies, I don't, don't have an answer for you.
Councilmember, do you have?
Yeah, and Metro doesn't throw anything away. You've got a huge, a huge library.
If it does exist, we will find it, yeah.
So thank you for coming forward. This is a big thing for the City of Glendale, but everyone has to know, things are going to be different. We're not going to have the two-lane Speedway down Central, or the three-lane Raceway down Glen Oaks. Things are going to be different. But in exchange for less vehicle travel lanes, we're going to have a high-quality transit lane. This is something that the City of Glendale has been working on with Pasadena and Burbank for at least 35 to 40 years, with Larry Zarian and Joyce Streeter back, back in the day. Many cities would kill to have a high-quality transit project in their city. They're fighting over it every day at Metro. Now, what we're getting is not a subway, it's a BRT. That means that, as Mr. Brantman alluded to, it's going to be less disruption. I mean, imagine if we had tunnel boring machines up and down Colorado, Central, Glen Oaks, that would shut the city down for years, as we see on the west side currently, and we saw in the downtown area when they did the regional connector. So what we're getting is a very quick implementation of something that's almost like a transit rail line, but has flexibility to change curb-running, side-running, median-running, to fine-tune it to what we need as a city. It's going to give us great opportunity to get outside of Glendale to North Hollywood, which can take you to Universal City, downtown to Hollywood, to downtown Union Station, and going the other way to the Gold Line in Pasadena, and you can take that all the way out to Azusa, or down through South Pasadena Highland Park, again, to a Union Station. Or it'll give you great connectivity just between our cities, between Glendale at Alameda, and let's say you want to get down to somewhere down on Broadway, the extent of Broadway, you could do that with very quick manner. I don't know if you talked about signalized lights, that the traffic lights will be signalized to give priority to the transit line, and there will be bike opportunities, bike lane opportunities wherever possible, but especially along Glen Oaks. It's going to be different. It's not going to be the same, but I am quite positive that this will be a, a great addition to our city. Sometimes people don't like change, but this is a good change. This is something that we should be very happy that we're going to be seeing on our street in the next two years, two, three years, you said. So please, if you have good ideas or comments, as Metro staff said, let them know or let us know, and we'll make sure we incorporate as much as we can to make this really tailor-fit for our community. So, thank you.
Now, Arpedian?
Well, I'm going to get in trouble today. I, I have several questions and maybe a couple of comments. I remember this project that came before council in 2017, 18, and there was presentation done, and now it's 25% of the design is approved? Okay. And we're talking about having community meetings sometime this summer or next summer. I think the community meetings should be done before even we get to 50%, or even to get to this point, because I have news for you. Let me, let me ask you this. What is the timing from North Hollywood all the way to Pasadena? How long would it take for this bus to go from North Hollywood to South Pasadena?
I think from end to end, the estimates are about an hour and a half. Hour and 10 minutes.
Yeah, I remember it was like 78 minutes, if everything is, so it could be an hour and a half, it could be 80 minutes. Do you have a, a report done or a survey done as to how many people trying to take the bus today from Glendale to South Pasadena to connect to Orange Line to go to Azusa and come back?
Yes, there are studies done that kind of indicate projections of riders boarding and alighting at the different stations along the alignment, and, and that estimate results in the, the approximation of 30,000 daily riders on opening day that grows to around 35,000, I believe, by 2042.
Okay. And whatever happened to that freeway option we had? Because there was a, a point that, there was a lot of support, even from the council or the, the community, that we would have a stop at the freeway, and if it's a rapid bus, that's the rapid way to travel through the freeway and take people to South Pasadena.
Absolutely. As part of the EIR, there were multiple routes evaluated, one of which was termed the freeway option, because it spent a lot of time on the 134. I think the conclusion, as it described in the EIR, in the final EIR, was in evaluating those routes, what the freeway option misses is all the intermediate destinations that really draw a lot of the 700,000 daily travelers through this corridor. And there's an existing Metro rapid service that runs a long, a large portion on the freeway, and because it's really an end-to-end destination and misses a lot of the intermediate stops, the thought is that that, that's the thought is that that's what makes it less successful.
And that 700,000 projection estimate, what percentage of that is from Glendale?
That's a good question. I don't have those numbers, but maybe Saka?
Yeah, I don't have that specific information for you, but the 700,000 daily trips goes back to a lot of the initial analysis we did looking at travel patterns within the corridor. One of the key takeaways of that 700,000 daily trips we found was only about a third of those were end-to-end, and about two-thirds of those were to destinations within the corridor. So for instance, from Glendale to Burbank, or from Pasadena to Glendale, those types of trips. And that helped feed into the alternatives that we developed for the alternatives analysis and ultimately for the EIR, and where we ultimately determined that connecting different destinations and big ridership generating destinations within the corridor was going to be of paramount importance to create a successful BRT. And also based on what we heard from the public during the EIR phase was that there was strong support for the street-running alternative.
And when was that public outreach done?
There were multiple phases of outreach that started back in 2018 and continued through the EIR process into 2022.
And any, on Broadway, are there any street parking removal due to this project?
Very little on Broadway.
Yeah, so the side-running configuration maintains a lane for curbside parking. The only reason we would remove parking is if it conflicts with one of the stations or to preserve required sightlines for right-turning vehicles that may be impacted by the restriping.
Okay. Because currently we have Metro in the city and we also have the B-line, and our ridership is half as what it was before COVID. It is coming up little by little, and I did a little calculation here. On a best day, we had 1.1 million 173,000 rides, basically tickets, a year. So if you divide that by 365, that's 3,200 people a day. If they go to a destination and come back, they use two tickets, basically. It's 1,600 people. That is 0.008% of the population. And today, it's 660,000 people a year that uses our services currently, the ones that we have in Glendale, and they go all over the city. It's not that, they may not go to North Hollywood and not go to South Pasadena, but they're in the city. It's well-served. So that 660,000 rides, it equals to 904 people per day, which is 0.0045% of the population. So what I'm trying to caution everyone, if you're trying to take all the traffic lanes out, take the street parking out, we need to talk to merchants, we need to talk to people. The idea of people are going to give up their cars and ride buses all the time, it's not happening. I don't see it, not in my lifetime at least. I know they say if you build it, they will come, but we have the system in place right now, and it's not being used for any reason. I don't know what the reason is. Personally, maybe it's not easy to get around, it takes too much time. If you are a busy guy like me, I go to 10 different places every day, there is no way I can do it through a bus. Maybe someday if I want to go to Galleria, jump on a bus and go there once in a while. But we have to be very careful as to, removing traffic lanes, I'm totally not for it. We have to do a lot more study to show that half the buses that we have is empty driving around town right now, because the ridership is not there. Nothing against the project, nothing against the Metro. I appreciate, you know, the, you know, you're taking that big step forward to provide this public transportation, but I think interrupting or disrupting daily traffics or daily lives of 2,000, 200,000, you know, population is not the fair thing to do, is not the right thing to do. I know we have issues on Glen Oaks, on speeding and everything, but $317 million project is not the answer for it. And this project was $240 million just five years ago, now it's 317. The good thing is I have a good memory on this project, I remember everything. So we need to be very careful. I know I'm only one vote, I know, you know, I appreciate Mr. Najarian was on the Metro and he brought this project because he feels that it's good for the community, but I think taking the traffic lane out in any situation is not the right thing to do.
Well, I just, in response, I will offer up the, the BRT is a direct response to passenger input about why they do, why they don't, or problems they have with using public transit. And one of the big benefits of converting a general-purpose travel lane to a dedicated bus lane is that it knocks off the biggest complaint transit riders have, which is reliability and speed. And so by doing that conversion, you're making the service, the transit service, more reliable and faster. And so we hope that this project addresses many of the reasons why people don't or are reluctant to use transit in a way that benefits them and ultimately gets cars off the road as people adopt the BRT service. It also has the benefit of serving your B-line transit, because they'll be able to use the dedicated bus lanes, as would emergency service providers, to the extent that that helps them get around traffic congestion.
I know we can, this is not, this is a complicated project and complicated issue, but if you consider like Glen Oaks Boulevard, it's a pretty, not only fast-traveling highways, as was mentioned, but the traffic signals are synchronized, the buses can travel, maybe not as fast as dedicated, in a dedicated lane, but fairly quickly. So the fact that people are not using it is not only because it takes two minutes longer or three minutes longer to get from one end to another. The fact is the convenience. Your personal car is the fastest, safest, most economical, and most convenient way to travel, no matter what. So if I want to go to Azusa, it would be very hard for me to take this bus for 50 minutes to get to South Pasadena, then connect to an Orange Line and take another, I don't know, how long would it take, 40 minutes, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, to get to Azusa, when I can take my car and get there in 20 minutes? All I'm saying is, taking a traffic lane out, we have to be conscious of the fact that many people are not happy about it in general. So if that, the idea of the freeway point or stop is still out there, we need to look at it.
Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you. I don't want to have a long discussion on this, because I know that this was just for the presentation, I appreciate it. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I know this has been a long time coming. I appreciate my colleagues' concerns, and I think that there's a lot of concerns. I think right now, as people are seeing some of the roadwork being done, be it on San Fernando or on Brand, there's obviously consternation and concerns about how the impacts of this will be. But, you know, I want to remind my colleagues as well as folks in the audience that, you know, Glen Oaks, everyone wants to see it as it is today, but that green median in the center, the purpose of it at one point was to have, was a public transit artery. It was a red line that went down Glen Oaks Boulevard. This is simply restoring something that many people in Los Angeles, those of us who are frequent car drivers, like myself and like yourself, councilmember Carpetian, and others who may not, who are perhaps walkers, users of bus and other modes of transportation, all agree we need to restore, which is why we're building out a public transit network in Los Angeles after it had been torn out. So is this the ideal way? I would love to have cable cars, or I'd like to have light rail, but this is at least a step in the right direction, I think, our colleague, councilmember Najarian, for the work he's done in bringing this in. Hopefully, if nothing else, it will slow down some of the speeds. It's something that we do need to do on Glen Oaks, because I'll tell you, Glen Oaks, I think is synonymous with excessive speeding, reckless driving, and I don't want to remind folks of the tragic incident that we had at the beginning of the year earlier, but that's not, unfortunately, unless things change severely in our community, I fear it will not be the last time we have an incident like that. Hopefully it is, but thank you for your presentation, and we look forward to the groundbreaking and us moving forward in the right direction.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of comments. I think whatever meeting it was that I joined, it definitely was more than two years ago. I had raised the issue of the route between Glendale and North Hollywood, and I specifically remember Metro staff had come back noting that the current bus routes that are in place or were back then, and it was before COVID, there wasn't much ridership on that route. I know the data that you came back with after that meeting specified that. So my follow-up question to that was, why would we build something even grander on the same route that people are not taking now, right? And so that still remains one of my questions, because I never received an answer. But I think, given how long this project has been going on, what I would really like to see is both what you have done for community outreach to communities that have language barriers. As you may know, Glendale has the largest immigrant population in California, and so I am very interested to see when you did do outreach and what your plans are in the future, not just communicating through, I mean, organizations, but how you're using ethnic media. What kind of funding have you placed into that outreach? Because a lot of times what I'll see is, you know, whether it's Metro or any of the other entities, you know, you'll post something on your own social medias, but it'll be in different languages, it's just a flyer, but that's not how you access these communities that are not possibly following you, right? And so I am very interested to see a very thorough, detailed marketing plan that incorporates our diverse communities and all of their languages, and I hope to get that before we move forward with the development agreement.
Sure, absolutely. And the outreach that was done as part of the environmental process has been summarized, and we're happy to provide a document that details all of the different outreach activities that happened between 2018 and 2022 when the board adopted the project and the final EIR, the Metro Board did. And then as it relates to ongoing community coordination, especially as activities in the field ramp up, we have a team that will be doing a lot of outreach in person, door-to-door, in addition to postings online and other mailers, to let everyone know about what's coming, so that those changes that are a result from the project, both construction impacts and just what to expect when the project is built and operational, are well-understood by the community before shovels break ground.
Okay. I look forward to getting that from you, and I would really like to see a detailed report of what you've done today.
Sure, yeah, we can provide that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Looks like we have two speakers.
Yes, we have two public comments. The first individual is Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
I'm ready.
Three.
You have one, mayor? Three?
Three minutes.
Two, I mean, three minutes, right?
Eight minutes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, I was looking at this thing here. What prompted me to come up here initially was the fact that the bus didn't stop at Glendale Avenue, right near City Hall. It was the first thing that caught my eye.
It does.
Second of all, it does? I didn't see it over here. It does, okay. Number two, what other concerns me is a survey. You know, my community newsletter goes out to thousands of people monthly. If you're going to have a survey, why don't you use social media like mine, and you could ask those questions, just to have a couple hundred people give you feedback on what they think about a bus lane or whatever it is? It's a waste. It's very user-wanting. That's number two. Number three, the B-line. If people want to get around, there's always the B-line, and it does a pretty good job. What's important is there's low ridership off the buses. I'd like to thank Mr. Councilman Vartan Carpetian for that memory, what goes on and all your detail of what goes on with the bus and BRT. I really appreciate that, because I don't think anybody on this council other than Mr. Najarian knows as much about public transportation as you do, sir. Also, if you're worried about people speeding on Glen Oaks Boulevard, you know how you can stop that? Have more law enforcement getting tickets. That's simple. They don't need to spend millions of dollars on public transportation to slow down traffic and bring in bike lanes. People don't want bike lanes. People do not want bike lanes. Let me repeat myself one more time. People do not want bike lanes. They want to use their cars. That's, we are automobile city, so is the county. If you want public transportation, go back east to New York or Boston. But Glendale is public, is not public transport, it is the automobile. We like the freeway. And for people who don't have a car, again, there is public transportation available, the B-line, Uber. You can give these people who don't have enough money, give them, what, $100 a month for they can use public transportation of some nature? But taking up traffic lanes is terrible. I'll repeat myself, it is terrible. People want to use their car. The people who make the city work drive their cars. They're the ones that go to work every day and pay the bills. That's the truth, isn't it? You know, I wasn't going to talk about this subject matter, but man, when it came up, Mr. Vartan, I want to thank you very much.
No, it's fine. I just want to...
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment, councilmember?
The only thing I forgot to mention in my comments in regards to all the folks talking about car lanes and how we need to preserve the car lanes, is that statistically right now, there's numerous reports people can access that show, and again, I don't know the reasons for this, but 18-year-olds today, only 60% of them have a driver's license, as opposed to 80% of them in 1983. So between 19, I remember when I was young, I couldn't wait to get behind the wheel of a car, get my driver's license. And by the way, that number is down to 60% for 16-year-olds, or actually, I'm sorry, even less. It's down, it's dropped from 46% to 25% of 16-year-olds, which is when traditionally people in this country used to learn how to drive. So anyone who's a parent of a teenager knows that vast majority of them are delaying when they get their driver's license. Mobility patterns and how people get around is changing. I'm not denying that. Again, these solutions may not be perfect, because our infrastructure is designed to support cars, but in places, again, where we've had public transit and where we can support it, we should look into it. Thanks. Thank you.
We have another speaker?
Yes, we have another speaker. Eric is up next. Eric, you have three minutes.
Mr. Kusakian, that last comment you made, I can tell you why those statistics are the way they are. 1980, 16-year-olds were men. Today, they wear flip-flops when they walk up to their house and they have broccoli haircuts. Those are not men. Those are still children. Second. Okay. Second, Beverly Hills, Rodeo Drive, Santa Monica, Ridgeway, Beverly Boulevard, do you see anything like this around there? No. They're a really proud city, affluent city, make a lot of money, too. Glendale's just as worthy to have the same type of affluence and same type of roadways. Second, Mr. Carpetian mentioned something about 1,600 tickets on a good day for the B-line? That's a small, small percentage. Now, here's a good comparison. I was late for the three-minute section. I asked if I can speak, I couldn't. I'm in the minority. We all moved on. Now, why should we abrupt and change the lifestyle for the majority of the people living in Glendale for a small percentage of people who think, who took a survey or so, and think that advancing the bus line, reducing lanes or whatever it will, will help their lives, but it will destroy the commerce of our city? You know how many businesses are on these streets you all mentioned? How many of them take pickups, drive-in, drive-out? You reduce lanes, increase traffic, all of that? What is it going to do to the commerce of the city? What is it going to do? What is it going to do to small businesses of the city? What is it going to do to the real estate agents, the businessmen that drive around the city and go to multiple locations in one day before they go home? This is not a at-large issue. This is a specific issue. Second, Mr. Karpathian mentioned a couple of years ago, it was around 200-some million for this project. Now it's around 300-some million. By the time you guys get this to dig and hit the rubber on the pavement, half a billion dollars? What about our unfunded liabilities? What about our expenses? What about our budgeting issues the city's having difficulties with, and we're going to add this on to it? Who's going to pay for it? Where the taxes going to come from? What taxes are going to be proposed to pay for all this? Have you talked to the residents of Glendale? Do they want more taxes? I don't think so. Here's a simple answer. Law enforcement. You have the police department right across the street. When I was going to school 25 years ago, you sped something like a speed contest. Your car would be detected, it would be removed, impounded, or destroyed or removed from your possession for 30 days. Kids didn't speed that much. Now again, it's coming back. What happened? Law enforcement is not being utilized. Get the bike cops, get them on the sidewalks, set up the traps, teach these kids, there's a law and order in our city. You speed, you kill people like you the person who did near the beginning of the year. That will not go.
Next item? Oh, did you please? Go ahead.
Look, I I just want to make a clarification that my comments is my idea is not to not have public transportation or not provide public transportation. My concern is on a street like Broadway, when it's jam-packed already, when you take a traffic lane out from each side, it's going to push that traffic to neighboring streets. Let's not kid ourselves that we think because there's a bus lane going back and forth every half an hour, every hour, or every 15 minutes, people are not going to use their cars. They are going to use their cars. They're just going to take another street. And also Glen Oaks Boulevard is a major throughfare. It just takes a lot of traffic from Glendale to Burbank and vice versa. Right? When there's an accident on the freeway, everybody takes Glen Oaks Boulevard. When you take that one traffic lane out on each side, you squeeze this traffic into two lanes when they could use three lanes today. Those are my concerns. The daily basis of average your residents are just going to be interrupted, and it's not only one street or two streets. It's Glen Oaks, it's central, it's Broadway, it goes to towards Colorado. So that's those are my concerns, and it's not that I'm against public transportation. I just don't want to paint that wrong picture out there. As far as teenagers driving, Mr. Kasakian is absolutely right. I always say my kids have 18 cousins. My kids, they got their driver's license when they were 16. Their cousin's, she's 20, she just got one today. So it it takes different people have different personalities, and they 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 live their lives differently. Some take it when they're 16, some when they're 20, maybe 25, but eventually, everybody is getting a driver's license. I don't know what percentage of our population do not have one. And one last question is, is there a I know this this project is funded by Metro. Am I correct?
Yes.
And is there a matching funds that we have to?
No.
There is no matching funds?
No.
Okay. That that was my 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 last question. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming. Next item, please.
Next item is consent items, including minutes. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Arpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian.
Yes. Next item.
Next, our city council and staff comments.
Do we use this?
I'd like to go first since no one's.
I can go first.
Go ahead.
You know, I we all attend different different events every week, so I decided not to mention all of them here tonight. I I, you know, we posted online, people know where we were. So in the interest of time, I'm going to stop doing that, but with that, that's all I have.
All right.
I'll go next. I would like to share with my colleagues in the public that I attended the meeting recently, a meeting of the Glendale, I'm sorry, Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust, of which I am a member. And we did a few important made a few important decisions, but I want to mention one, and that is that we allocated $3.45 million to Burbank for the first project being funded by the housing trust. And this is a a project that they're calling the Burbank Homeless Solution Center. The total cost of the project is around 11 to 12 million. So the the housing trust is funding a small portion of that. There's a large portion coming out of their general fund and and other other sources of funding that they have. What they did is they purchased a site on South Front Street, right across from the metro link station, and they're putting in 26 prefab, they call them suites. They don't like to use the word tiny homes because tiny homes have a bad rap, but also these are very different than the tiny homes that we've been hearing about in Eagle Rock and where is it somewhere in in the valley. These are kind of little studios that have bathrooms and showers inside, and I think that's a key difference is that they the shower and the bathroom are inside. You don't have to go out to some shared facility. So they're going to be putting in 26 of these, providing 49 beds. It'll be for temporary or interim housing for homeless individuals. There'll be laundry facilities. They will have safe storage. They also already, I think, have a safe parking there for people that are in cars. They have 14 spaces for for cars. And then they're going to couple that with services to help people with permanent housing, help people with jobs, also mental health, substance abuse, and other types of issues. And the project is slated to be opening in the first quarter of 2026. It'll be pretty fast because they're going to bring these in basically on 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 wheels and and plop them down. So anyway, good first project, and they are open to partnering with Glendale so that we can refer our homeless clients to that facility. And I believe our our people and their people are in touch with about that. So just wanted to share that with with the public and with my colleagues. And the other thing I'll mention is Sunday evening was Yom HaShoa, which is the Holocaust Remembrance Day. Councilmember Asatrian and I went to Temple Sinai for a memorial service and also to hear a presentation by a Holocaust survivor named Ava Pearlman, who told a very moving and fascinating and and in some ways very uplifting story about how her family miraculously made it through the war hiding in the mountains of France and being protected and fed and cared for by non-Jewish French families who risked their own lives to protect them. So it was really a story of bravery and goodness in the midst of a lot of hate and cowardice. But, you know, overall, I think Yom HaShoa for for me, anyway, is this year very poignant because of, you know, the aftermath of October 7th, the largest massacre of Jews since World War II by Hamas, group whose goal, as we all know, is to eliminate all Jews from the former Palestine. And it's doubly poignant for me and many American Jews because of the death and destruction in Gaza that's being carried out by the Israeli Defense Forces in reaction to October 7th. And it's difficult when we hear characterization of Israel's reaction as genocide itself. And I'm not taking a position publicly on any of this. I don't see the value of doing so, just saying that it is a hard time, and it's difficult for American Jews to process what's happening. Also, a reminder that man's inhumanity to man is still widespread, and no group is purely victim or purely perpetrator. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Well, I didn't really want to get into this again, but I think it's important to set set things down for the record. This issue is ongoing, not necessarily before us at council, but before other forums, and it's regarding April 2nd, the selection of the mayor. And on that day, I was denied the position of mayor by my colleagues. Mr. Brotman raised the issue of an interview that I gave to a news organization back in June, almost a year ago, where I stated that the parents in Glendale were upset that the school district was telling children that if they chose to identify as a different gender, that their parents would not be notified. He made another corollary to that, but this was one of his points that he made. I believe I said something like it would be held as a secret with the school district and parents would not be notified. Mr. Brotman stated that what I stated was inflammatory and hurtful because there is a state law prohibiting parental notification and that the school district, GUSD, was only following the law. Well, as it turns out, that is wrong. The school district, the school board, the Glendale Teachers Association, who espouse that view, are wrong. There is no law that prevents parental notification. It's Education Code 221.5 where this issue is dealt with, and certain people in the administration of Governor Newsom have stated that, oh, no, that law says it's got to be a secret. Well, that issue was laid to rest just last week, where the attorneys for Governor Newsom and the attorneys for the Attorney General, Rob Banta, asserted in a United States Federal District Court that there is no such law that prevents a school district from notifying parents. Those assertions were made by Attorney Emmanuel Swashay, and it was acknowledged in the open record of the court, and the transcripts are available, by Judge Justice Benitez. If anyone thinks I'm wrong, I'm happy to have this agendized for another discussion, but I will assert by transcripts that I have and by court records that the state of California does not assert that there is a parental restriction on notification. Thank you.
I had a bunch of events I was going to list, but I know we have a heavy agenda, so I'm not going to. But I am going to take one minute to thank our amazing economic development staff for putting together an exceptional, fantastic small business summit last week. I know I tend to nitpick, and from A to Z, I kind of from walking in to leaving, there was just the whole thing was just exceptional. We had double the number of attendees that we had last year, and I think at this rate, we're going to have to look at building a place that we can actually host larger summits. And so I just wanted to thank and congratulate staff and thank all the small businesses that attended. I do want to note one thing as it pertains to next year. In speaking with some of the larger corporations that were both present and ones that I had reached out to, I do want to make a note that these sponsorships need to be sent out or requested before October in order for them to look at incorporating into their fiscal budget. I know that requires a little bit of early planning on our part, but I think if we start looking at the summit as not just an opportunity to provide the resources our small businesses need and to allow for them to network, but this can also turn into a revenue generating opportunity for us, and I look forward to working with staff in both bringing in additional sponsorships and how we build for the future. So thank you again.
All right. Next item?
Next is community event announcements, three minutes each. We have four speaker cards and a caller. Our first speaker is Tony Passarella. Tony, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Tony Passarella. North Brand Bike Lanes, Part Two. Bike Lanes That Lead to Nowhere. Hold on, not so fast. There's a grander connectivity plan around the world. They're calling it the 15-Minute City. But what's a 15-Minute City? Mixed use, everything you need, restaurants, shopping, within 15 minutes bike ride or walking distance. Here in Glendale, it's called the Mobility Plan. Everyone go to glendale.gov/mobilityplan, talking to the public, they're viewing, glendale.gov/mobilityplan. You will find out the following description by clicking on the Bicycle Transportation Plan tab. The city of Glendale embraces a vision for an active and healthy community. That's the cell. Where bicycling can serve as primary, primary form of transportation. Enhanced bicycle infrastructure coupled with supportive policies. See Canada's Quebec, small island in Quebec province, having to show a QR code to enter and leave the city. Or Germany's Transportation Secretary saying he wants to ban motor vehicles used on the weekends. Policy. Continuing, supportive policies that can create a significant cultural change. There it is, folks. There it is. Pay attention. They want you out of your gasoline-powered, Mr. Brotman, are you listening? This is your baby. This is your wet dream right here. Powered, carbon-emitting vehicles. Good luck with that. So I spent two hours walking up and down Brand Boulevard, and this is what the people say. Regal cleaners hates it. Endodontics, dangerous. Parking, terrible. Select physical therapy patients showing up late. Traffic congestion. Lloyd Turner dentist, terrible. Lindora Clinic, patients all complaining, showing up late. Tech Town Smart Solutions, horrible. Narrow parking, customer complaining. Ronald dentist, horrible. Everybody hates it. Glendale Family Dentist, it's ridiculous. It sucks. Traffic issues, customer complaints. Wow. One business, well, let me keep going. Denise, a random lady I met on the street there, she gave me her name, was happy to do it. She said, I introduced myself. She's, Tony, this is dangerous. There's a blind spot when I pull out the driveway. I've yet to see one bicycle. And many people told me the same thing. I've talked to random people on the street. I haven't seen one bike. One business owner said, I haven't confirmed this. I got a public records request in. Well, the pitches went up. Anyway, two accidents of people backing out of those spaces. I'll confirm that and bring that next week.
I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Good job, Tony, on the bike lanes on Brand Boulevard. Spending thousands, or should I say millions of dollars on road diets to create bike lanes for the elite bike riders is a luxury that Glendale taxpayers cannot afford. The bike lanes on Brand Boulevard between Glen Oaks and Mountain Street are already a disaster. Residents are already complaining on social media. Should there be an accident and people hurt or killed? The public will blame this council. Your hands will have blood on it, not to count the lawsuits to follow. This Dan Brotman Temporary Pet Project to satisfy his supporters is costing taxpayers over a half a million dollars at a time when we need all available cash to draw down our almost $1 billion in pension obligations. If Dance Pet Project does not work out, to remove the lanes and restore the street as whole, it will cost over $350,000. A total cost of almost $1 million. A total cost of almost $1 million of taxpayers' money wasted. As the city approves more mega apartment projects, it will create a higher density, and we will have more traffic jams on Brand, Central, and Glen Oaks Boulevard. Dan Brotman's vision is to turn our jewel city, Glendale, to a communist Chinese city, forcing residents to ride their bikes to work and shopping, come rain or shine. Most older folks do not ride their bikes, rain or shine, Mr. Brotman. On the books is to have bike lanes on Glen Oaks Boulevard, and Glendale Fire Department has already recommended not to have it for safety reasons. Will lawsuits follow if our fire department cannot arrive at the scene on time? All these bike projects have dictated Dan Brotman's fingerprints. All bike lane projects must be placed on hold as they are unsafe and costly. Dan, when your house is burning with mega pension obligations, you don't go out and buy new furniture or drapes. On another note, my newsletter goes out to thousands of people. And if you want to take a survey, you can use my newsletter. It costs you nothing. You make community announcements. It costs you nothing, and I'm glad to do it. So when you have these bike lane surveys or the bus surveys, when you have a couple of people at response, that's nothing.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Tony Sardo.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tony Sardo. Maybe some of yous know me, maybe you don't. I've been in Glendale for, I don't know, 68 years. Came here from Boston with 17 children. I'm one of 17 children. I've been living in North Glendale now for 52 years in North Glendale, going up Brand Boulevard. And Brand Boulevard, to me, being in Glendale so long, matter of fact, I was, I served, I'm mixing stories here, but I served on the beautification committee here. I was appointed by Larry Zarian. We were very good friends years ago. And I was somewhat involved in politics. But I'm not here to talk about me. I'm here to say that they've just wrecked, absolutely wrecked, Brand Boulevard terribly. I hope all of yous will take a drive and see what they did to it. And dangerous? I happen to live in the hill. I'm blessed, and I live on the hill in Glendale. And my kitchen is all glass, and I overlook Brand Boulevard. And you know what I used to see every night when the lights were on? I'd see a steady flow of cars going nice and slow up and down Brand Boulevard. You know what I see now? I see a single lane with all brake lights, all parked in front of the fire station. It's dangerous. People are going to die. Second safety thing that's really bad, and I think you people are good people. I think yous care about Glendale. This isn't a money problem. I think yous are all smart people, and yous know about spending money. And I think yous try to spend our money wisely. I know yous do. I know the councilmen, and they're good people. So I'm not here to badger the council. But I will say this. When you see a string of cars with brake lights, and I've been living in this house for 45 years. And for 45 years, my kitchen just overlooks Brand Boulevard. That's what I look at. Now, I'll close with this last issue. Cosmetics. When I was in cosmetics, Lee, they destroyed it. There's four churches on Brand Boulevard, four of them. You can hardly see them now. They backed the cars up where they're higher because the road is built like this, you know? And it's, the cars are parked higher. They got a bike lane there. Last issue. I drove tonight down Stalker to turn left to come down to Wilson, okay? There's a lady, they've painted these, they look like patch quilts on the street, great big patch quilts. And of course, the lady, the light was red. So the lady saw the patch quilt, so she walked over the bike lane. She walked way out to the edge of the patch quilt. She went for the light to change. Cars are going, "June, June." Someone's going to be a gentleman. I'm coming to, I'm going to try.
Please use the microphone. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Anyways, that's about all I have to say. I hope yous will really bring Brand Boulevard back. Last closing statement, I promise, last one. I know my three minutes is up. Brand Boulevard, to me, I've been in Glendale for, like I said, I've been living in North Glendale for my house for 40, for so many years.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Liz Radley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm just here about fun, actually free fun with horses. The Los Angeles Equestrian Center, I've mentioned before, was with management that has been replaced by Reckon Parks. They've put $2 million in to revitalize it. New management's only been in for 90 days, and we already have the first big horse show coming up. So on Saturday, May 11th, after 5:00 p.m., is the first international Grand Prix jumping at the Equestrian Center for years. Now, I know that that is not in Glendale, but it's right next door to Glendale. There are Glendale horses and Glendale riders who will be competing in some of the competitions there. We have kids there who will be competing in costume classes on ponies. It is free. In fact, there's two weeks of shows from May 8th to the 12th, the 15th and the 19th. So if people would like to go, they can drive there. It's free parking. It's free attendance. They can go by bike because there's bike lanes all over there. And of course, there are bus lanes, local buses as well. So I just wanted to draw everyone's attention and the fact that if all the seriousness that's going on in the world, it gets to be too much, just come out and bring the kids and come watch the horses and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is on the phone. We have a caller, Bert Culver. Bert, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, council. Thanks for taking my call.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm calling in about Brand Boulevard, North Brand Boulevard. I went out there today to pick up a, see my doctors. And wow, it looked really great. I just turned lane, and I parked, and everything went smoothly. It was great. And there were people out talking in the median, talking at... There were actually people scanning the bike lane. I thought it was odd, but it was nice to see people out and about on the street. It's nice to have the street being used for more than just cars because there's more than just cars living in this city. All right, that's all. I love Brands, North Brands, and I'm looking forward to it coming all the way up to Montrose where I live so I can ride my bike there. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all.
What do we have next?
Next are action items. The first action item, Action Item A is Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and the Glendale City Employees Association. One, Resolution Approving and Adopting the GCEA MOU Commencing July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Two, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Employees Covered by the Glendale City Employees Association MOU. Three, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of One Classification Title and Compensation for Electrical Line Mechanic Supervisor II Covered by the Glendale Management Association MOU. Four, Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Cost of Living Adjustment for Executives.
Mr. Glanion.
Yes, Mayor Satrion, Member of City Council. So the Glendale City Employees Association, or GCEA, is the bargaining representative for non-managers, rank-and-file city employees, excluding sworn police, sworn fire personnel, and utility field workers. It is the largest and most diverse bargaining unit representing 690 employees across various roles. The previous MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with GCEA that went into effect September of 2021 provided modest cost of living increases, averaging around 1.5% annually over its three-year duration. Starting in December of 2023, the city has engaged in negotiation with the GCEA team. And after extensive discussions over multiple meetings, we are presenting resolutions tonight for a new three-year MOU with GCEA effective July 1st, 2024. The proposed three-year MOU includes COLAs in the amount of 6.5% effective upon adoption of this MOU, 4% effective July 1st of 2025, and another 4% effective July 1st of 2026. Additionally, this MOU includes a medical insurance premium for all the GCEA employees that will be aligned with those of the GMA, which includes a 50-50 split on any new plan premiums. And starting July 21st of this year, employees will also be eligible for up to six weeks of paid bonding leave within the 12 months following the birth, adoption, or foster care placement of a child. This agreement also includes salary schedule that will be simplified currently from nine steps down to six steps to make it a shorter band. The MOU also includes adjustment and special pay for some positions in Integrated Waste Truck Mechanical Maintenance, Commercial Refuse, Fleet Services, and Public Works Technician positions. I wanted to express my appreciation and gratitude for the GCEA negotiating team. Some of them are present here tonight, as well as from the city's management side, John Tuktalian, Paula Adams, Jason Bradford, Amy Martin. Let's see. The MOU presented to GCEA membership was ratified with a 90% approval rate. And with that, oh, there's also provision to adjust the salaries for the executive team while we are working on a plan that will go into effect and, or starting in 2026, to address issues with salary compaction citywide. And the MOU includes a cost of, 4% cost of living adjustments for the years two and three of their MOU. With that, I recommend that the city council adopt this proposed MOU. Staff are available if you have any questions.
I don't see any questions. I would just like to also say thank you to everyone involved. And I want to particularly thank our GCEA members for all your hard work. We hope that this new MOU will bring at least some of the cost of living and the inflation that we've seen, especially in the last two years, and help you cover some of the costs that have been, you've been taking on, on the other end. And so, thank you again for your service. And to Ms. Adams, thank you for helping facilitate in all those that are, were involved. With that, is there a motion? Oh, is there a quick?
Mayor Satrion, we have two public comments. The first one is by Jaime Avalos, GCEA.
Mayor Satrion and members of the city council. I'm Jaime Avalos, President of the Glendale City Employees Association. And today, I'm joined with some of the members that comprise the GCEA Negotiation Committee. This committee has the honor of representing various city staffs across the organization, including Public Works Maintenance Services, Integrated Waste, Library Staff, Glendale Water and Power Engineering, Parking Services, PD and Fire Dispatchers, to name a few. We wanted to take this time to personally thank you all for reviewing and hopefully voting to approve our new three-year contract. The negotiation process is never an easy task to accomplish, especially with an association as diverse as the GCEA. Over the past few months, we've been meeting with different employees from various departments to hear what they were expecting from this new three-year contract. And we always heard the same two things at the top of every employee's list. First was the out-of-pocket medical premiums we have to pay. And I would like to again say thank you to those voted to approve the new medical broker for our city employees. Those savings could not have come at a better time for us. Second, the second items goes without saying, and it's probably the most important to our membership, the yearly increases we depend on to stay afloat. Additionally, as Mayor said, the changing of the nine-step salary structure to the six-step and adding additional incentives for mayors, for members within the organization will hopefully bring in additional talent to the city of Glendale. I see this new contract as having a positive impact on our employees' lives for the foreseeable future, and I'm pleased to say that the employees are happy with what you will hopefully approve tonight. The contract, when taken to the membership, had a 90% approval from our members. I know this process was long and tedious for all involved, so I wanted to take the city side of the negotiating table for meeting with us and going through this long process. I know these negotiations could not have been successful without the work of John Tuktalian and the management team, Paula Adams and HR staff, Jason Bradford, Tony Ligon and their team that performed the hard work of looking at the numbers and costing our list of requests, the negotiators on both the city and the employer's side, Peter Brown and Vicky Barker, and all those others involved. Again, we thank you for your consideration for this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I respect our hard-working people in the General Service section of the city. But you know what? We can't afford any more pay raises. Councilman Dan Brotman mentioned recently about the pension obligations of about $1 billion unfunded. If we have unfunded pension obligations, the house is burning with pension obligation, and therefore, why are we giving pay raises? Don't get me wrong. I can say they deserve it. But if they don't like it, the exit door is to the right. I'm sorry. You're just going ahead, right now, you're talking about having enhanced taxes for Glendale taxpayers. You know, mansion tax, transfer tax, you know, go to the bathroom tax. You name the tax. We're going to have a new taxes for the taxpayers of Glendale to pay for these pensions and salary increases. Again, city employee, I respect you with the hard work you do. But I'm a taxpayer, and we work very hard. We work very hard also.
Yeah, the Speaker addressed the council.
Yeah, I know. Okay. We work very hard also, just like the city employees. But we pay the taxes. And by the way, how many of these city employees actually live in Glendale? That's another question you can ask. Because if they're paying the taxes, I give them more respect. But if you live out of town and come in the city, again, we cannot afford additional pay raises. We can start with the general service employees. Then there are the Police and Fire Department. The management. We have to start somewhere, and tonight is where we start. Our house is burning with unfunded pension obligations. This has been going on for year after year after year, and council keeps approving it. You take millions of dollars every year from GWP and transfer that money to the general fund to pay for these salaries and pensions. It's not supposed to be that way. I'm tired of paying taxes. So are my neighbors. And I'm sure the taxpayers of Glendale will give you guys all a phone call tonight. Thank you.
That's all. All right. I don't see any comments or questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't press my button.
Yeah, I didn't press my button either.
Yeah. Since I was not part of the negotiation, I'm going to recuse myself from voting.
And I just simply want to say thank you to both sides of these long negotiations and for the benefit of the public. These are complicated deals that get put together over many, many months. They come here, you see a very quick vote. You see a couple of thank yous. But what you don't see is everything that went into it. And there were a lot of people involved, and there are a lot of considerations. We obviously are looking very deeply at our budget situation. We're also looking very deeply at our budget situation. We're also looking very deeply at the marketplace and our need to be competitive to attract and retain the kind of talent that keeps this city running and keeps this city great. Everybody depends on the services, and the services don't happen magically. So, we are pleased that we had a good negotiating partner. We know in the last round of contract negotiations, this bargaining unit really, I think, was very supportive of kind of some of the constraints the city was under budget-wise at the time and agreed to some very, very low annual increases below the rate of inflation. And some of what you're seeing now is kind of bringing them back up to where the market is. We may, you know, debate a little bit whether it's they're at the market in all classifications, but I think we're in a much, much better place. And anyway, just want to say I support this agreement, I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of our staff and the hard work that they do. And I'll move the item if you're looking for a motion.
I am, thank you. A second?
A second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Rappetian?
Stay.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Thank you. All right, next item?
Next action item, action item B is Management Services regarding appointment to fill vacancy on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. One, motion appointing an individual to serve as a Glendale representative on the airport authority for the remainder of the unexpired term through May 31st, 2025. And two, motion directing staff on alternate options for recruitment and selection of an airport authority commissioner.
Right. Mr. Galan?
Yes.
Yes.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the Hollywood Burbank Airport is managed by the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority with nine commissioners appointed through a joint powers agreement, or JPA, amongst the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. Commissioners serve four-year terms, with each city appointing three members to the commission. And as former council member Paula Devine's service on the Glendale City Council ended on April 16th of 2024, that seat has become vacant, and we are requesting nominations to fill this vacant seat.
Councilmember Najarian?
I just want to express my thanks to Councilmember Devine, who served many years on the airport authority. She served most recently as the president in '21 to '22 and brought the airport along. The big news at the airport is that we just agreed to a guaranteed maximum price for the replacement passenger terminal of $1.1 billion, and the next two years are gonna see some intense activity at the airport, constructing that new terminal and eventually demolishing the old terminal and the old parking structure. We saw pictures of it a month ago, I think Ms. Devine brought them forward. It's gonna be a beautiful addition to our region. But again, thanks to Ms. Devine for serving incredibly well on the commission and as the president of the commission.
Right. Councilmember Brotman?
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a nomination. Are we ready for nominations? I think so. Okay. I would like to nominate our mayor, Ellen Asatrian, to take the seat on the airport authority. I know it's something that she's been interested in for a long time, and I think she would make a good addition to that board.
I apologize, but we do have a card, so I don't know when you would like to.
Why don't we take the nominations before we go for a vote? I don't know, you know, what other nominations are gonna come through, so before we take the vote, we will take the, and we are, we're not taking any more cards, correct? Okay, great, thank you.
I second the nomination, and, you know, I would like to say that I'm also interested on serving on airport commission, but we do have, I'd like to agendize it for next week to talk about, for the, we have three seats, and I know that one is being served by Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, one would be you, Mayor, and the third seat, I would like to discuss that opportunity for myself, but I second the nomination.
And I would be more than happy to discuss you serving on it as well, or any other members that would like to.
Thank you.
And agendize that item. I do, I do have a question, because looking at both the motion and the way that it was phrased, so if, if these appointments to the Burbank Airport Authority are for four years, based on the council member's term, it opens up during the term or whatnot, when, when we took the vote for Representative or, you know, former mayor Frank Quintero for that other seat, if it's for four years, why weren't there two seats that were brought forth for a vote? If it's, is it, is it, is it following, and not that we would, you know, not vote for Councilmember Najarian to continue serving, right? That's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking the process of, is it for four years following the term, or is it one appointment and then that person continues to carry on until?
Mayor Asatrian?
They don't want to anymore, or someone raises it?
Mayor Asatrian, as our city attorney Garcia is getting ready to respond to, I believe it's for four-year term concurrent with your term, council member term on council. Former council member Quintero was appointed to that seat to finish the previous council, I believe it was Agogenian who was on the airport commission, to complete the remainder of that term.
If I may, so under, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so the terms of the airport commissioners are defined in the JPA in the four-year terms that start on June 1st and the most recent term started on June 1st of 2021, and those terms expire on May 31st of 2025. So, the, this appointment would be to fill the remaining, the unexpired remaining term that Councilmember Devine was serving until May 31st, 2025. The other commission terms also come up on that date, so I anticipate next year before that expiration date, those appointments, reappointments would come back to council for reconsideration.
All right. Okay, so all three would be coming at the same time?
Correct.
In 2025, okay. But outside of that, it looks like there is a request, so maybe during the next item you can get the three votes for us to agendize that. Okay, so it looks like, I appreciate my colleagues' nomination. Did you have a comment?
No. There's a comment.
Oh, there's a comment.
Of course.
Mr. Mohill?
Good evening, council members. Name is Mike Mohill. Should this appointment to the, to the airport commission, should it be a political position or should it be a professional? That's really the question. Now, I believe in the past, we had someone from the city of Glendale represent us on one commission, I don't know which one. Maybe Mr. Najarian knows or Vartan remembers better, but the question is, why don't we have a professional person who's familiar with the workings of an airport? In all due respect, Ms. Asatrian, you know nothing about the way, when airport runs, and neither do I, neither do any five of you people. So why don't we hire or have a volunteer work for us at the airport commission? I'm sure of a city of 200,000 people, we could find one volunteer who would love to work at the airport. They do it for free as a, as a retiree. You know, again, why should it be a political position? No disrespect, because you're all elected, but you're not professional. And you have to, then you got to go ahead and ask an expert, what should I do? Because I don't know. Why don't we have a professional, someone from the city, from the, from our city, ask for a volunteer? Someone who has airport management would be nice, somewhere along that line. Thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's all.
All right. Can we get roll call?
Madam Mayor? So, if I can just reply. So, so being on the airport board is definitely, it definitely has its political component. There are a lot of issues that involve the residents of the tri-city area, Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, so you have to be in tune to the residents. And especially, in this case, the commissioners from Glendale need to be especially in tune to the issues affecting the residents of Glendale. Some of those issues, may I, if I may ask, or if I may put forth, involve flight, takeoff, and landing patterns, which have in the past been suggested that they come over Glendale to reach the airport as opposed to going south from the airport over the Hollywood Hills area. So that's definitely a political issue there. But the, the airport is staffed by professionals, much the way the city government is staffed by professionals, attorney and city manager, who are trained in municipal administration. The airport authority makes the large decisions about financing and airlines and amenities and passengers and all that sort of stuff. So, we did have a former pilot, Carl Povolitis, was on the airport authority several years ago. We had our city manager, Jim Starbird, several years ago. But Glendale is unique in that most of our commissioners are council members. Burbank does it the opposite way. None of their commissioners are council members. They're all members of the, the public, perhaps with an interest in aviation and airport administration. So you make some good points, but it's not entirely, as you said, political or technical. It's somewhere in between. And I'm sure Ms. Asatrian would get up to speed quickly after a few meetings and be right on board.
Seeing no other comments, can we take roll, please?
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Rappetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item, action item C is Management Services regarding selection of charter review committee members continued from April 30th, 2024 council meeting. One motion selecting members.
All right. Mr. Galan?
Yes, Mayor Asatrian, members of the city council. Briefly, the city council approved the establishment of a nine-member charter review committee on February 27th of this year. After an extensive marketing campaign, we received 31 applications plus three that came in after the deadline. And this item is in front of you to appoint the charter review committee members from the pool of applicants. We have provided three alternatives method that council can choose to use, utilize, and there's, obviously, the last alternative is any other alternative that we haven't been able to identify. With that, we're here to respond to your questions if you have any.
So, I think, oh, it looks like my colleagues have comments. I'll, okay. I think the way I kind of want to go through this conversation is identifying, number one, what we're looking to have this charter review committee do, because during the last meeting, we talked about whether or not districting was going to be part of their discussion, the civil service processes, or anything else that we wanted specifically add to the November. Given the very tight deadline, I want to see if there may be an agreement from my colleagues that some of those more pressing items don't go through this committee, and this committee only reviews, you know, for the next two years, additional items that we can be placing on the ballot in the future. Go ahead.
So, I'm not opposed to that suggestion. I do think that the work of this committee is going to be important enough and set the foundation for the laws that will govern how this council and future councils will operate and how the city will function. And so, in that regard, I don't want to rush it. I do want to give, it was, I believe we were informed at the last meeting or during one of our discussions that the prior charter review committee had met for a period more than a year, correct, Mr. Garcia?
At least two years.
At least two years. So I think in that regard, I do want to see the work of this, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. So for that regard, in that regard, I would like to see, at a minimum, the work of this committee be carried out for a period of at least a year, meeting regularly and doing deeper dives into, you know, they may come up with structural changes or recommendations, be it anything from an elected city attorney or elected mayor to neither, but I think it's something that's worth giving them ample time to study.
All right. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think the focus of this committee should be on, what did you call it? Councilmember Kasakian, you called it civic housekeeping, I think. Well, he's in the midst of a conversation, but civic housekeeping is the word I use, which, the phrase that you used last week. So I think that should really be the primary focus. I, I don't see a lot of value in having this committee get deep into these issues that we're talking about bringing to the ballot in November. I think anything that we're bringing in November, it's a little bit late for the, this committee to weigh in on particular. I don't, I think it's a waste of time for them to be taking a position on districting versus not districting, or six versus five, or elected mayor versus, you know, all, all districts. I don't think that's of value for this committee. I'd rather see them work on the nitty-gritty of kind of modernizing some of the items in our charter that are unrelated to districting. That's where I'd, I'd come out.
All right. Any other comments?
I didn't press my button. So, are we giving direction today as to how to select it? Because I agree, the, the districting and mayor at large or not, or what have you, I think there's not enough time. In, at the end of the day, I think we want them to do a better job or a good job, and a few months is not enough. And I think based on our scheduling that was given to us, when it was part of the applications, if I'm not mistaken, it's until 20, we asked them if they're available on the different dates, and that was until 2025, so it will, in March of 2026, so it's, it will give them enough time to review the charter. And also, I think we have to provide a clear plan as to what is it that we are, we are asking them to review, because if you put the charter in front of me today and said, "Go review it in two, three weeks and give us an update or an opinion," I can't do that, because it's very difficult, it's very technical, it's, it's, it's our constitution, basically. That's, that's the city of Glendale's constitution. And changing it has to be very, done very carefully, if anything. So, I think we need to have people who are really committed, who are able to read and understand those documents, to give us the perfect ideas as to what needs to be changed or not. So with that, I want to hear from my other colleagues as well, but as far as selection process, we'll discuss.
I was initially trying for us to get to a point of what the committee would be working on and.
Right.
on and make that decision and then move forward with discussion on process for selection. Councilmember Najarian?
Well, yeah, so there's a, I mean, there's a lot of things they can work on. One issue is, do we want to have a appointed city attorney or an elected city attorney? Do we want to have an elected city clerk or an appointed city clerk? Do we want to have an elected city treasurer or an appointed city treasurer? Those are pretty big issues in and of themselves that could be discussed. Just off the top of my head. Election dates, election process. I still, I still would like to see us have a independent election, independent of the county. There are consultants out there that, it's not just Martin and Chapman, there are others out there that do their own, that assist cities in their own elections. Things like that, those are just three or four off the top of my head that if they want to get into, of course, they're not time critical, but eventually, were they to make recommendations, it's something we could consider.
I think specifically looking at if you're okay with them not taking on the districting, the civil service processes, or whatever, some of those things that we were.
Well, the civil service process, I think, was pretty easy. Wasn't that one of the more easier steps?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's not overly complicated, but it's not, you know, it's not straightforward. But it, yeah, to the point of the council.
Yeah, if you want to leave them out of districting, I mean, I'll have my comments on districting in the next item, but if we want to take it out of their hands, I'm okay with that.
For the civil service, I know that in the next item, you were also going to go through some parts that, you know, you would need direction on. Is this also a moment where you would need direction on that?
I think we would only need direction to know whether or not you, it sounds like you're developing consensus, whether or not the charter members that we're considering, you're considering for November 2024, whether you want the charter review committee to review those. And what I'm hearing is that you don't want to do that. So I think we'll have a direction on that.
One item I do think that this committee should review, whether it ends up being a proposed charter amendment or not, is compensation for board members and commissioners, stipends, which I've brought up before, as well as council member stipend or pay. And I'm not speaking about myself, it can be proactive versus retroactive. I don't care if, you know, I am the beneficiary of it, but as a tool to recruit qualified and able people who want to run for a council, who are giving up many other aspects of their personal and professional lives to be of service. I think that's an issue that we ought to consider. Other cities do have council seats that are compensated, and that is something that can only be changed by charter. Am I correct, Mr. Garcia, by change to the charter?
Councilmember Kasaki, so if the council wants to change it above and beyond what the state law permits, then yes, it would need a charter amendment.
And in addition to that, I think that that is, all the issues that were mentioned, I think that councilmember Najarian's suggestions are also valid for discussion and for review. And it's something that we should study, as well as, you know, whether there should be an elected mayor or not, or expansion of city council or not, regardless of what the districting discussion is, what the overall format of the council should be.
Okay, great. All right, with respect to selecting members, I know that councilmember Kasaki had a question about how it was done last time. Were we able to pull up?
Madam Mayor, members of council, yes. So in 2003, when the council appointed the members of the charter review committee, it was a 15-member committee, and each, each council member selected three members to be on that committee. So the overall membership was approved by the council, but it was assigned to each council member to pick who they wanted.
All right. How do my colleagues want to do this? I had made a proposal about nine names, and then I know that others had made recommendations on being able to select.
I, I think if we each choose one and let the city manager maybe interview some of them, because this is a big list, and I have so many people that I think they are qualified, but they're more than nine. But if you choose one and the half-city manager choose another four, I think that would be the easiest, cleanest, and quickest way. I could live with that.
Okay. I raised my hand.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I am uncomfortable with that. I would like to see us reach consensus, at least majority, but ideally beyond majority on the membership in this committee. And so what I would suggest is we start off by writing nine names down on a sheet of paper and handing them to somebody to collect. And let's see whether we have significant overlap. I think we probably will. But let's see where we have at least three people naming the same person, and then we can take those to a vote. And, and, you know, and then take it from there. But I think we should first see where each of us are with, with the lists that we have probably put together in our heads or on paper.
Right. Councilmember Kasaki?
Thank you. I think that, you know, if we have a process, ultimately, I have never been a big supporter of the direct one-to-one appointment process, because I don't think it supports or encourages compromise, finding candidates that people, all of us can agree on. I would suggest that if we were to go the route that councilmember Bratman is suggesting to, at a first pass, see who gets at least four votes from that list. And then the next tier, if there's only one or two people that four of us or five of us can agree on, then the next tier can become, you know, who three, who three council members can agree on, and see if by doing that exercise, we can at least come up with nine names that all of us can agree on. Is it nine total, did we say?
It's nine, yes.
I mean, I would at least be interested in seeing how many of the candidates listed at least four of us can agree on.
Right.
Yeah, I think there should be some minority representation on the, on the committee. You know, I'm not saying that, that there isn't, there aren't commissioners which should be voted on by the majority, but, you know, I, I just think that in this sort of advisory committee, there should be, there should be members who are appointed by a council member, even if they will sit in the majority. Otherwise, the, the voice that I'm looking for could be stifled by the majority.
All right. Councilmember Garpetian?
And one thing that I, I don't want to do is to vote candidates down. Because people spend time to fill out applications and apply for it. I don't think we have to debate qualifications here and say this person is not qualified versus the other, because this is not a job, it's not a qualification that you have to have like a resume to, to be qualified to sit on that, on that board. I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not comfortable debating the candidate's qualification and expressing why we are or not voting for, actually not voting for a candidate. So maybe we should all write two names and hand it to the city manager, and the city manager can put all their names in one hat and pull one out, and, and you have nine, nine members. And then you have representation, I don't want to call it minority, but representation from every council member, and as well as, you know, if.
No, that was really for.
If there is a majority or minority, we'll have at least six from one versus the other. But in general, I think, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable debating the qualifications of the candidates. Thanks.
Councilmember Kasaki?
So there were at least, there were 31 names that were submitted. I don't object to, I understand where councilmember Garpetian is coming from, but if we do that, there's always the potential that, you know, all of us may submit the same two names. Now, I don't think that's likely, but I think each of us only giving two names and are doing it like we're picking, you know, kids from elementary schoolyard, like a kickball team, I get that person and that person. I don't know if that's necessarily the best way. I think, you know, I've, I identified in reviewing the applications from last week to this week, identified people whose backgrounds, who's professional experience, whether it's legal or in civic engagement. And, you know, some of the applicants have attended our civic institute. You know, based on that, there are individuals that I think kind of rise above the rest of the candidates for the purposes of this exercise. I'm happy to give that list of 12 names to the city manager or for whoever from staff to see if there's any overlap. But I think just looking to see who from that list can get at least four council members to agree on it, on them, would be a good place to start. Maybe more than nine, maybe less than nine, and then we can go from there.
I have a suggestion.
No, just list everyone that you think is qualified. If you think everyone's qualified, I mean, I would say, like I said, I at least put a star or a mark next to 12 names that, looking at their experience and what they bring to the table, I think are well-suited for the exercise of reviewing the charter and making recommendations. I can whittle that down to a few less. I could, possibly there were even some folks that were on the fence, but I was comfortable with identifying at least 12 people.
So on my end, I have eight people that I've identified. The rest of the folks, I just, you know, I had additional questions, it's something that would want maybe the city manager to look at and give his input.
Let me make a suggestion, if I could. How about we each hand the city manager a list of some number, could be 10, could be 12, and have the city manager take those lists away. Try to, and, and use, use his own judgment on, on those candidates, trying to get a mix, male, female, younger, older, from different, you know, ethnic communities, to try to put together a group that he thinks is going to be effective and win all of our support. And then bring that list back to us and have us vote on it.
That's one way.
Well, that way, and the reason I'm saying is, that way, you'll get a sense from our lists who we think are the best candidates. You'll probably see a lot of overlap, right? And, you know, you'll be able to draw from that, and you'll also then be able to apply your own judgment and to try to get a mix. Because I think that's important, too, that we have a mix of different types of voices. We have, you know, different whatever, ethnic backgrounds, genders, age.
Right, right.
One of the things I was doing in looking at the list is I was really trying to find, you know, there's some people that are very involved in the community, we hear from them a lot, but there are also, you know, some younger people that, that we don't hear from a lot, and I would like to kind of see some of, some of those voices also participate.
Our city attorney had, if I may.
I was going to say, that's one way, definitely we can do that. I'm hesitant to bring the item back and provide a list that I have generated based on your comments, make, create a across-the-board representation. And then councilmembers disagree with two, three of those choices, and then we're back to, now what do we do?
I think that if we put the rule, or if we put the initial rule in for the first pass, that in order for someone to be considered, they have to get approval of at least four out of five council members. I think that is a pretty high bar for applicants to meet. I think it's a fair and justifiable process or suggestion to move someone along in the process. I think if we can see how many people we end up from that list, we can then fill the gaps in the second phase.
You mean this evening?
I, I mean, I don't see why not. Yeah, sure, absolutely. Four out of five?
Yeah, if, if you.
Minority, I mean.
Look, I mean, first of all, with the minority, you keep saying the minority. I mean, there's multiple ways of defining the minority, and a minority voice isn't going to be suppressed in open meetings. If someone, look, there's going to be people who are going to feel like they're in the minority regardless of what the outcome of this body is. I don't know who you're specifically considering or thinking, but someone can consider themselves in the minority regardless. Inevitably, out of, we have, if we have 31 applicants, someone's going to feel left out with only nine. But we all agreed on nine, so let's see who most of us can agree on could take on this task.
Just want to confirm, since you mentioned 31 applicants, we also had, as I noted, three applications that came in after the deadline.
Thirty-four.
Right, if you want to consider those three or not, then, then you have now 34.
I'm okay with considering.
Okay, then you have 34.
I mean, I want to leave party politics out of this. Let me get, jump straight out and say that. And there's a majority on this council that are very well-connected with a Democratic Party. Several of these candidates are leaders of Democratic organizations. I don't think that sort of selection is appropriate. And if you guys do the voting, there's no opportunity for a, a Republican, whoever that Republican might be, maybe there are four or five. Since, this is, you know, let's not kid ourselves, this is where the city has gotten, folks, for that type of candidate to have a seat on this, and I think that is unfair.
Sorry, the city attorney had also suggested, there's a fifth way of doing this, is we, you pick four by majority vote, and then you have four now on the committee, then you each get to add an additional candidate. That makes nine. So four by majority, and then.
Five by selection.
Right, five by selection.
Direct selection.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
If I may, just, I'm sorry, I did, did press the button, but just one additional. So just procedurally, since the Brown Act prohibits secret ballots, I couldn't recommend a process where you give, you give the city manager names, and then he selects and brings them back to you. You can certainly, if you all want to read your names, and then he can follow that process, so at least from a transparency Brown problem, yeah.
I'm fine with that as well.
So what did we land on?
I'm fine with reading my names.
No, I mean, which method of selection?
I think we give it to the city manager, bring it back. And I do agree with the, you know, four out of five is, most things on this council, we don't even need four votes on. Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, just to, now that it's getting any, any easier, just another idea. If we each give one name, and city manager goes through the applications and chooses four, and that, that four items, four names will come back to us to vote for. If he gets three votes, it's done. If not, then at that time, you can each appoint another person as well, instead of, because this is, I don't know where the end for this will be, if you go nine names and then, then what? If there is not much overlap, let's say you have three names that overlap, then what are we going to do? Each, if you, if you each appoint one, there are only four, four left, and the idea of being a minority or majority will go away. And then that four, the other four, it's easy for city manager to, to pick, because he will look at the applications the same way that we did. And that will can, can come back and be voted on. And that's just another idea. But I'm, I'm okay either way, we just got to get, I just hope that this, this committee, committee's work will not be like the ones that we have in the past, that they spent a couple of years on, you know, studying and having meetings, staff time and everything else, and when it comes back, it gets noted and filed, and then we put it on a back burner because, for any reason. So I just hope this will be a very efficient document that we can, we can implement in the future and, and work on.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I think that, you know, we can even make the first pass just to see if all five of us agree on candidates, which I think would possibly address some of, or councilmember Najarian's concerns. And I think that by having unanimity, unanimity in the nominations of certain names would send a very strong message in terms of the trust that we have in the committee and their ability to do this work. I mean, I would just say, let's at least see who we can all agree on, and then move from there. If we only come up with four names, we allow the city manager to select the remaining five, that's fine. We may surprise ourselves and find that there's nine names that we. five, that's fine, we may surprise ourselves and find that there's nine names that we all agree on. So that's my suggestion.
All right.
Let's give it a try.
I'm open to giving it a try.
Do you have somebody to take notes?
All right, who would like to go first?
Do you have any speaker cards?
Can we do this?
Let's go through the process first, and then we'll take speaker cards.
How many are we reading?
Up to nine.
Up to nine?
Up to nine, okay.
You don't have to do nine if you don't.
No, 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 I have a list of a little more than nine, okay.
I mean, can we make it more than nine, just so we see if there's?
It's your call, it's your process.
Is that what you would like? Is there consensus?
I have 13 names I'd like to read.
Okay.
I have 11.
All right.
It might help reach consensus to have more names.
Mr. Karpetian? Do you have more than nine names you would like to give?
No, I, 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 no, I have some names, but I just don't want to throw names out there because they're out there. I want to.
To me, appointing to any commission or any committee, I have to know and understand the mindset of these commissioners or committee members, and make sure that are in line with mine, basically, in general. And I don't want to just throw names out there, so I'm just going to name people that I believe they can do a good job, not that the rest of them cannot. That's why I was kind of hesitant in bringing names up, then I'm going to get 20 phone calls tomorrow, as to how dare you, didn't even mention my name, because I put my name in there. So I'm between rock and a hard place, we'll go wrong if you want to, but I think.
We're all going to get that, right?
Should I go first to get the ball rolling?
Okay.
Go for it.
All right. So, from the list of 34 very committed, civically-minded residents, the ones who made my shortlist are the following, and I hope I don't mispronounce, may I take this sheet so I can, because I have my own handwritten notes. I have Alan Durham, Ani Garibian, Carl Povolitis. Okay, Alan Durham, Ani Garibian, Carl Povolitis, Denise Miller, Elizabeth Manasarian, Patrick Karpetian, Stephen Meek, Brian, you don't hear, Brian Smith, Stephen Flower, Lilith Hartunian, Sarah Woke, Rachel Yu, and Paul Karpetian.
You said, oh, oh, you said Patrick Karpetian?
There's two Karpetians, Paul and Patrick.
Okay.
Who would like to go next?
I can go next.
Go ahead.
So I have Ani Garibian, Brian Smith, Alan Durham, Stephen.
Can you slow down a little bit? Can you start over again?
Ani Garibian, Brian Smith, Alan Durham, Stephen Meek, Denise Miller, Rachel Yu, Lilith Hartunian, Linda Magardichian, Carl Povolitis, Elizabeth Manasarian. How many was that? I think 11.
Ten.
Ten, okay, I'll leave it there, 10.
All right, who would like to go next?
Carl Povolitis, Alan Durham, Adora Beal, James Clark.
And Najarian, if you can.
And I'm excited. Okay, let me start over, Carl Povolitis.
Yes.
Alan Durham, Adora Beal, James Clark, Pam Ellis, Patrick Murphy, Mariam Kaluschen. I wrote Karpetian, but I guess there's two Karpetians, so let me pause on that one. Rachel Yu, Steve Meek, and Flower.
So you have nine councilmember Najarian?
Nine, I would have to go back and figure out which Karpetian I meant, but let me just stick with those nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, yes, that was 10.
Without the Karpetian?
Without Karpetian, it was 10.
Mr. Karpetian?
Don't call me tomorrow and complain. Okay, going through the list, Adora Beal, Alan Durham, Carl Povolitis, Edwin Woskanian. Yes.
What was that name, Woskanian?
Woskanian is number eight.
Edwin.
Edwin, Edwin.
Could have done by numbers, so you don't reveal names.
So, can we redo this and go by names? Lilith Hartunian, Paul Karpetian, Patrick Murphy, how many is that?
Seven. Seven.
Seven. Elizabeth Manasarian, Pam Ellis. Did I say Lilith Hartunian?
Yes.
You said that, okay. Did I say Patrick Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
And Linda Magardichian. That's nine or 10?
That's 10. That's 10.
Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
All right, Ani Garibian, Denise Miller, Linda Magardichian, Brian Smith, Rachel Yu, Stephen Meek, Lilith Hartunian.
You want her?
That's okay, there are the two people.
Oh, do you want me to slow it down?
A little bit, yeah.
All right, Ani Garibian, Denise Miller, Linda Magardichian, Brian Smith, Patrick
Tavarnanian.
Tavarnanian. Rachel Yu, Stephen Meek, Lilith Hartunian, Stephen Flower, Elizabeth Manasarian. Did I get everybody? How many is that? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, and Paul Karpetian.
Councilor Mayor, would you like us to read those names back to you to confirm with your list, or?
I've handed you my list, so I'm fine.
So if you would give us a couple of minutes to tally the numbers and see who comes up to the top.
Can we take a two-minute recess?
Absolutely. Sure.
Good luck.
Oh, we're back.
Mayor Satran.
Dum dum dum. Do we have results?
Drum roll. So, based on your chosen candidates, we have ended up with six candidates who got four votes and six candidates who got three votes.
Okay.
So. I'll read off the first batch with four votes. Alan Durham, Carl Pavolitis, Elizabeth Manassarian, Lili Hartunian.
Slow down, slow down, please. Okay.
Rachel Yu and Stephen Meek.
Okay, four votes. Okay.
The second batch with three votes. Ani Gribian, Denise Miller, Linda Megardichian, Brian Smith, Paul Karapetian, and Stephen Flower. That's without Councilmember Najarian's vote on the two Karapetians.
So.
So, why don't we take public comments?
You want to take public comment now?
Yes, and then we can move forward. How many cards come in?
Mayor Satran, we have two cards for public comments. The first public comment is by Zare Amirian. Okay. Mike Mohill, you may go first.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, our city is divided politically right now, and it's disgusting. It was never this way in years past. Right now, we've got three councilmembers politically to the left, and we've got two moderate to the right. How can the public trust this council when it comes to a charter change? I believe what you should do, the political left should bend to the political right and give the right an extra person or two. No, no, it's not a matter of, that's funny. No, could you, could you see, you're talking to the thousands of people in the viewing audience tonight, and I'll write about it in my newsletter, how you all vote, and how, I want to see fairness for a change. We saw what happened with the appointment of the mayor. And that's still ongoing, Mr. Najarian, as you know how he feels. So, I think this council going forward needs to bend their back backwards toward to make, so that the public says, you know what? We're trying to make up for the badness that we created recently. The three progressive liberal democrats have the power here. Show your, what's the word, I can't pronounce the word, but how great you are by saying, you know, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Vartan Kapetian, why don't you have an extra person on this charter? So, that way, we'll show you and the public, we're trying to be fair. Fairness is important. I know this is politics, but this is a charter change. And it will last for how many years till the next charter change? Hey, I won't be here around for the next charter change, I'm already 82, okay? So, if you have another charter change in 10 years, I'll be 92. I don't know if I'll be here for the same discussion. So, I'm asking the people to the left, bend to the right a little bit, give them a couple of extra people. It's only a charter, it isn't like they're voting on something. It gives the public saying, you know what? This new council is going to be different than in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Zare Amirian. You have three minutes.
Zare Amirian, thank you for hearing out my comments. I think the word Mr. Mohill was looking for was equanimity. I'd like to give you my perspective on this process as somebody who's served for 20 years as a commissioner in the city and continues to serve as a commissioner in the city. I think almost every single one of you on the dais, and we've had an opportunity to interact, and I don't think in any of those interactions I've ever interacted with you regarding city issues with national politics. I haven't spoken about whether, you know, it's liberal or conservative, Republican or Democrat, none of that. Because I really don't think a lot of the issues that we're facing in the city, those things have a bearing on them. And I've been disappointed by how divisiveness nationally has reared its ugly head in our city, and it has affected, I think, you know, you have, you know, 34 well-minded civic-minded people who applied. I'll tell you for a fact, there are a lot of people who didn't apply. And they didn't apply not because they weren't qualified to offer their opinion, they didn't apply because they didn't want to be put through the process that we've been seeing over the past, you know, six weeks or so. Look, I get it, I see it, and I understand that you're all political animals to a large degree. But I know each one of you also care about the city of Glendale. So, leave, please, 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 just trust me on this. If you choose to do this, each of you got somewhere between 4% and 9% of the vote of the population of the city of Glendale. That's, I mean, that's just a fact. So, there isn't some super majority here or, you know, some, you know, some mandate from the city that things have to be a certain way. You know, I served on the Pension Review Board Committee, speaking of one of those committees that were note and filed. And that committee, there were, each councilmember chose two, two people, okay? Councilmember Najarian has appointed me to every commission, and he'll tell you that when he first appointed me, I recommended that he appoint somebody else. Why? Because I said, no matter the fact that we agree on a lot of things, I'm never going to be a rubber stamp. I'm going to give you my opinion based upon the facts that are presented to me. And at the end of the day, what's going to happen is, we are going to disagree on this.
Thank you.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Do we have any callers?
That's all. Oh, actually, we do have a caller, but that's for the other item. That's for another item.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I think, I think that we've gone to a good place. I don't know what the concerns and consternations are of some of the speakers as they brought them up. I mean, in terms of, you know, I understand that some of us may not have received the majority of Glendale's residents voters, but of those eligible and under the system we have, we did have democratic elections, and everyone up here, both people that I may share some ideological views with and those I may not always agree with, were duly elected. In Pasadena, where they have districts, people are elected with an even smaller share of the overall electorate, yet they make decisions for the entire city of Pasadena. Pasadena has districts, but I'm not going to make this about districts versus at large. Simply to say that the process is a democratic process, it's transparent, the election results are certified, and then we get to make decisions that we believe are in the best interests of the entire community, taking in input from all sides. Now, in terms of people thinking this, you know, the Charter Review Committee is going to run or bulldoze over some sort of minority voice, first of all, let's be clear. Whatever recommendations are made by this committee have to be approved by those very same voters, whether they're the majority or not, but it will be through a vote of those who turn out to vote in that election when these are on the ballot. Okay, so the voters ultimately will have the last say in it. Not necessarily the committee. The committee will decide what gets put to the voters. I think there's a little bit of confusion as to how the process works. People assume that we have ultimate authority. We saw that last week as people came in here thinking that the city council has the authority and the power to tax individuals in the city. That's not the case. Voters get to approve these things. So, the other thing I will say, I don't know if Mr. Mohill is here or not still, but I under, look, I will defend your right to free speech and your right to say what you want. He's outside, he's having mid-conversation, I don't know if he can hear me. But I will defend Mr. Mohill's, even though I disagree with him, I will defend his right to say what he wants to say because that is a core principle of our nation. The First Amendment is a sacrosanct right for me. Okay, whether I agree with your expression or not. But you can't publish or write an email to a list of however many he claims to where you malign, attack, talk to people or address people in ways that are not very civil, that are not unifying, and say then that the city is divided, that the city is divided. You can't, you know, set a building on fire and then, you know, complain that it's hot in there. So, if there is going to be efforts to unify this committee, it starts with each and every single one of us, including those who spoke here. And I think the process we came up with right now to select some names shows some promise and a positive move in the right direction. And I also don't believe that using labels like progressive as a pejorative helps the process of unifying people.
Right. Mr. Farbikyan?
Would you please repeat the names one more time? The six and six, first sixes and.
Absolutely. Because we have to vote on it, right?
We have, yeah.
Okay. No, 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 okay.
We're still going through the process, right?
Yes, we haven't finalized the list. As you know, the council had decided on a nine-member committee. We have 12, as I, we'll read them off. The first batch with four votes. Alan Durham, Carl Pavolitis, Elizabeth Manassarian, Lili Hartunian, Rachel Yu, and Stephen Meek. Okay. The next group with three votes. Ani Gribian, Denise Miller, Linda Megardichian, Brian Smith, Paul Karapetian, and Stephen Flower. Okay, thank you.
For, for the ones that, that received three, if they weren't part of your original list, do we have councilmembers that didn't have these individuals as part of their original list that would be willing to give that fourth vote?
I was going to make a suggestion.
Please, go ahead.
I was, I was thinking two things. One of them might be a little crazy, but let me just, let me just say it. And city manager involves you, so I want to make sure you're, you're with us. But, so, you know, we have six. We could just have the city manager identify three out of the six that got three votes to try to get some, you know, balance. But the other thing I'm thinking is, in the spirit of whatever it is, equanimity or whatever term we want to use here, is allow each, each of us to, like you select a jury, what do you call it, a challenge? Anybody here on the dais can say, you know, I'm really uncomfortable with a particular person, I would like them strike off the list. A little odd, but that way, at least, we're not in a position where somebody is very uncomfortable about somebody who's on this final list. I don't know if you're interested in that.
I, the only comment I do have to make with the four that we have, I do want to see diversity in age as well. And I'm not, I don't know Rachel Yu, but the rest, I, it's not there right now.
Not there right now. Right, right.
Councilman Kasakian.
Thank you. So, I would say that I'm fine with even, like, the original Charter Review Committee had 15 members. I'm fine with having this have 12 members. There's 12 names that most, the majority of us and the supermajority of this council agree on. I think inevitably, given how long this body may meet, some people may be able to continue with the meetings, some people may drop off, as we saw happen with our ad hoc tenant landlord committee. I'm fine with it remaining at 12. It's not a big deal to me, and I think staff should be able to handle it. That's the other, I think, simple, simple solution. And for the record, I didn't, I don't know most of these peoples' political or partisan affiliation, nor do I care. What I care about is their ability to attend the meetings, provide valuable input, and make recommendations to the council.
I would be open to that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well.
So, have six and six, all 12 of them, they had four and three votes, four votes and three votes. Six had four votes and three had, six had three votes.
So, whoever's on the, on the list that were read off.
If that's council's desire, we can move forward with that.
It seems like, you know, I mean, I'm looking at the, the names, it feels like everyone got at least a couple of people that they wanted on this committee. So.
I'm okay with that too, yeah. I mean, we can discuss this 100 different ways. There is no right or wrong way. I think the names that have the most votes are here, so instead of nine, let's have 12. It's not a, not an issue for me.
All right.
I'm okay with it.
You're good.
Do we have to have a recall?
Can I, yeah, can I restate the motion and then the council can move in, second it? That's okay? So, the motion would be to expand the committee to 12 members, and then also to remove the considerations of the charter amendments that the council is considering for the November 2024 ballot? And then appoint Mr. Durham, Ms. Gribian, Mr. Pavolitis, Ms. Miller, Ms. Manassarian, Ms. Megardichian, Paul Karapetian, Ms. Yu, Mr. Meek, Mr. Flower, Mr. Smith, Ms. Hartunian.
Is that all the names?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to appoint them.
Okay, I'll second the motion, unless you have it.
No, I'm, I mean, there's some pretty political people on there, which I wish everyone was apolitical. I don't want to call anyone out, but I'm a little uncomfortable with someone that was very political on there. But you guys got the power, so you guys go ahead and do it.
That's actually not true, Ms. Councilmember Najarian. Alan Durham was yours, Carl Pavolitis, Elizabeth Manassarian, Stephen Flower.
They're all apolitical.
They were, I mean, they were also all people that you.
But they're apolitical.
It's probably from the second list.
There are some others that are pretty political.
I don't know who you're referring, okay.
It's all right. You guys got the votes.
Call, please.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Karapetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Stain.
Mayor Satran.
Yes.
Okay.
Next item?
Next item is hearings, item A. City Attorney Regarding Sixth Public Hearing Regarding the Composition of Council Districts Related to the City's Proposed Transition to District-Based Council Member Elections and Discussion of Potential Amendments to the City Charter. One, motion identifying a proposed district map for inclusion into a proposed ballot measure to transition to district-based council member elections. Two, motion providing direction on a proposed district map. Three, motion directing staff regarding proposed charter amendments pertaining to council districts, a directly elected mayor, and council compensation.
Madam Mayor?
Open the hearing?
Great, thank you. And so, with this item, Madam Mayor, the sixth public hearing regarding transition to a bi-district election system, which the council has been considering and discussing since May of last year. The council initiated a process to study transition to bi-district elections involving six districts and a directly elected mayor. The staff and the consultant team have been engaged in robust outreach efforts. In November, the council directed us to conduct additional focused stakeholder outreach, which the team did from January through April of this year. Doug Johnson from NDC is going to present an overview of that outreach, as well as provide an overview of the status of the maps. After that, I will provide a brief discussion on some of the outstanding issues related to the charter language. And then, at that point, we will seek, after any public comment, we will seek feedback and direction on, on the maps and the process as the council desires. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Madam Mayor, before he speaks, may I be recognized?
Sure.
So, with all due respect, I don't think we should move forward with this exercise. The reason being, the Supreme Court of California heard the case of Pico versus Santa Monica. It ordered, it said that it did not invalidate the city of Santa Monica's system of voting, but rather gave additional direction to the trial court, trial court. This is two levels down from the Supreme Court as to how they should do. As to how they should deal with the issue of dilution. Dilution is why we're here today. That matter has not been resolved by the courts. It's still up in the air. It's improper for us to be looking at maps, To be looking at percentages, to be saying, well, it's 33 here and it's 31 there, Until we get a firm legal ruling by the courts. From the trial court, whatever ruling they make, It could very well be appealed to the Court of Appeal, And after that, could again be appealed to the Supreme Court. We are, we are having an exercise in futility here. We don't know what the courts are gonna say. We're flying with a blindfold around our eyes Until we know what the courts are gonna say. There's certainly no rush to do this. There's no law firm that's gonna be picking up this case, Threatening the City of Glendale when the law is in a state of suspense right now. So what we're doing, which is much different than what we did When we started out with this case, is flying blind. It's wrong for us to continue until we know what the state of the law is. And, you know, I know you've done your research And you've had your meetings, and some people like this map And some people like that map. But until we know what the dilution factor is, We're just, we're just spinning our wheels. That's all I have to say, Madam.
If I could briefly respond, Madam Mayor? So, not to get into too much debate about it, but I would state two things. One is that it's our understanding that the, We have gone down this road in part because there is a policy preference That some council members have to exploring this. And so that's why we're here. There is obviously this legal issue that's being dealt with the city of Santa Monica. We do have guidance from the Supreme Court decision. I don't believe that this decision is controlling The discussion that the council is having here, although it plays a factor. So I would just say it's not improper to have this discussion. And, and as point of, point of fact, Any, any jurisdiction at, at large can be sued. And the, the law of the Supreme Court created in the Supreme Court decision Ultimately controls any litigation and not what's currently happening In that particular case. So with that, I would, I would defer and ask that Dr. Johnson provides presentation.
Right. Are my colleagues okay with receiving the presentation?
Yes, at this time, yeah.
I mean, we have a presentation, we can receive it. Then I, I will make my comments after we, we hear from the, the gentleman.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be back with you, and, and it's already been somewhat of a long night, So I'll try to keep this relatively brief as we go through this. The city attorney gave you the, the big picture, the timeline. We do have the details of all the hearings and outreach efforts That have gone on over the, almost a year now. The first hearing was, was June 13th of last year. We had a, a first round of forums, received public maps, Had a second round of forums, and got some more maps. And, and then came back to council at your direction. The, the team then started the series of stakeholder meetings That I'll detail in a moment. But now we're back at, at May 7th. Coming back to council to bring you the, the kind of admittedly limited input That we've received at this point. And looking ahead to next steps, you don't have to decide tonight. But we are looking at a ballot measure deadline. The, the official deadline is August 9th, Where the council has to act to put this measure on the ballot. And your last council meeting before August 9th is July 30th. So that's the absolute drop dead. Obviously, it's better to act sooner rather than later To have the time to carefully write the city attorney's reviews And all the things that go into ballot measure. And then that ballot item would go on the ballot this November. And the, if you were to put it on the ballot, And the new system would then, if the voters approved it, Be used in the 2026 elections. After extensive outreach to all kinds of groups all over the city, We did hold the series of, of organizational stakeholder meetings That are listed here, where we had nine stakeholder meetings, Some virtual, some in person. Some of them had multiple groups participating. So you can see the, the broad range of types of groups From the Latino Association at the beginning To the Northwest Glendale Neighborhood Association at the end, And lots of different groups in between there. So we had very vigorous discussions with all of them That had lots of questions and answers, lots of good thoughts and input. We did get some individual opinions on whether or not to make the change. The organizations, though, have not weighed in with official positions. Altogether, we did have, as I just mentioned, the nine stakeholder meetings. We had 13 groups that participated. Turnout varied. The Glendale Community College was just one-person Zoom Kind of briefing of them, of what was going on. And then we had, I think the high was at Chrysenta Highlands Neighborhood Association. We had about 20 people there. Most ranged from four to 16 participants. And altogether, the city staff and your Trepepi Smith outreach team Gathered 72 names of people that turned in their names At these various forums, and at the last two more general public forums That were announced on the city social media and various channels And in the paper, and, and that anyone could come to. They weren't limited just to stakeholders. And we had another 30 or so people that participated without signing in. So we had roughly 100 people that participated in these meetings Over this time period. And we'll go through all the details. We wanted to record everything, so it's all on the record. But essentially, these were informal stakeholder meetings. We would give a brief presentation of the process, the timing, what the questions were. Mostly, they went straight into Q and A fairly quickly. And, and each group had a different focus and, and source of questions. We didn't spend a ton of time presenting pros and cons of districts Because we mainly directed people to the, to the pros and cons of districts Page on the website. But the discussion, we did get many comments and opinions From residents on their thoughts on that, and I'll list those later on. But the main goal was to be informal, to get people to participate, Get people engaged in this process, And hopefully to get them to weigh in with their personal opinions And ideally with organizational opinions. At the meetings, we started with the, the three focus maps that the council chose. The, the three on the left here, 106B, 125, 126D. We did emphasize, however, that these were just example maps. These had no official standing or preference. They were just designed to show the breadth of, of maps out there. Early on, we did get a couple of folks that said, hey, We don't think these really capture enough of the breadth. We, mainly from the Chrysenta Highlands folks, They really like to show other options for the northern seat. And admittedly, the first three are essentially the same northern seat. And so they requested, and it just came up a couple of times, That we add in map 120B and 124 To show very different approaches of what to do with the northern seat. So we started adding those into all the meetings. So we, we showed those at all the map at all the meetings. And of course, we had the interactive map whenever we could, so we could show every map. Summarizing the general awareness of the community, Most of people had heard something about this. There were not a lot of folks that had been following it very closely. We, we got some general questions that you have heard early on about, Does this create a strong mayor, full-time council, anything like that? Change the council manager form of government? And we were able to address them. No, those kind of fundamental city structures would take separate amendments To the charter to do, and they're not part of this discussion. As you just touched on a little bit, there was a frequent question of, Does the city have to go to district elections for legal reasons? And the answer that we provide is, no. There is general concern that there's a lot of these California voter And it's like challenges coming up, but the city is not facing any immediate legal threat. And then we got a lot of discussion, who picks the map? Why is a map being drawn now instead of after the residents vote on districts? And we gave the answers there that you have heard many times Right here at this podium of the example of what happened in the previous vote And the opinion that now we should have the map before the vote, Because last time we didn't. I'm kind of summarizing this, it's all there for the record. We did get a lot of groups that expressed appreciation for the outreach, for the engagement. And we're glad that the city council had directed And, and the city staff and Trepepi Smith had really reached out these groups And, and kind of grabbed a hold of them And said, you really need to hear about this, and, and gotten on their agendas. So that was general impressions. Getting into the specific feedback again, We'd got no organizations that took a specific position, pro or con, On whether or not districts should go on the ballot Or whether voters should approve it. We did get some individual, a significant number of individuals Sharing their opinions on that question. This is not, oops. Not in a particular order. These are not organized in any particular structure. I wanted to kind of share just the general thoughts Without favoring or discriminating against, to use redistricting terms, Any specific comments. But we did get concerns, most of which you've heard In public comments here at this podium, Concerns that districts would create fiefdoms And isolate council members from citywide concerns, Feelings that districts believed to division. One person said districts may make sense someday. We heard this a couple of times. But that Glendale was not yet big enough where it really needed districts yet. And then, as I mentioned, a preference to vote yes or no On districts prior to picking a map. There were also some concerns about just having one representative, Or really two, because you'll have a council member and the mayor representing you, Instead of all five who are accountable to each voter. And cost about the, concerns about the cost of districting and redistricting, And how that, the change of districts as, as council, Because I can just commenting about Pasadena, Can reduce the number of votes that a council member needs. There were also were, as I said, these were a collection of comments. Supports districts, do the neighborhood focus that that would bring. And in contrast to the earlier comment, Feeling the city is now big enough that it does need districts. So we, we did get all kinds of comments and opinions through this. We did have some folks that thought, they liked the rotational mayor system. And, and concerns that if, if there was a citywide mayor, They would have to be from one of the districts, And that might give that district an, an advantage in some form. And then, just wrapping it up, you can read through all these as well. So we did get one comment at the last public forum where it said, Well, this is obviously an interesting question, a big debate, Even though the individual was undecided on whether we should have districts That did support the idea of putting it on the ballot And leading to the citywide debate on this issue. So that was the, the list of specific comments about pro and con on districts. Turning to the specific maps, what folks said about the different maps Or about how they were looking at the maps. One question came up a number of times, not so much as an opinion As a, a question about downtown business And the success or, or struggles of downtown business Really impacts the entire city, from traffic to economic support and the finances of the city. So the question, should it be isolated in one district? Because it's becoming more and more of a community Of, of more apartment and condo living. Or should it be divided in multiple pieces? Since it really impacts the whole city? So that multiple council members represent the, the economic core of the city. And there are maps that do both of those things. You can see some of the specific comments. Chrysenta Highlands and Whiting Woods should be together in one district. Whiting Woods would be good either with Verdugo Woodlands or with the canyons. Montecito Park sharing more issues and concerns with the canyons Than with Verdugo Woodlands. Map 106B, districts two and three work well, But District Five should not divide downtown. Which is a good comment to highlight that these, Even though we have a lot of maps out there, These are not necessarily the final set of maps. There could be revisions to this map, to these maps As you go through this process and make your decisions. A couple of comments from Adams Hill about, And actually, this is the diversity of opinions we got. One, Adams Hill is better being with its neighboring areas Than having an arm off to Glen Oaks Canyon. And then someone else had disagreed and, and thought Adams Hill Shows more issues and concerns with the canyons Than with the areas immediately north and west of it. So then the last list of specific map comments. Specific preference for map 126B as being best overall for the whole city. Just a statement that whatever map was chosen, It's important to avoid dividing the neighborhood associations. And then, of course, someone else who had a different opinion, Which was Verdugo Woodlands could actually be divided Because it shares, because of where it's positioned. It shares issues and concerns with areas to the north And issues and concerns with areas to the south of it. Someone liked map 125, I kept downtown unified. Someone else liked 125 because they, they like that, What you see in a number of the maps, the San Fernando Road District, Which goes all the way from the Rancho down to the southern tip of the city. And then at the same time, opposition to that San Fernando Road seat Just being just too long, going from Forest Lawn all the way up to Burbank. And then the comment from one of, supported map 126D Because it creates more diverse districts. So a lot of kind of random all over there are the comments. In an effort to summarize it, I did kind of go through and pick out What were specific comments for different maps. And again, no one took an, no organization took an opinion On whether the question should go on the ballot or yes or no on districts. But we did get a couple of organizations weighing in. Adams Hill Neighborhood Association supported 120B and 129. There's an asterisk by 129 just because of acknowledgement That 129 is a little bit rough. So there are some small, very small, non-big-picture changes That would clean up some of the neighborhood associations in that map. And then the Chrysenta Highlands Neighborhood Association endorsed map 120B As their preferred map. And then we had a handful of individuals endorse individual maps. One for 120B, one for 125, again with some of those small neighborhood cleanups. 126B and 126D, D again with some small neighborhood cleanups. So not a, a lot of specific yes, no's or map recommendations, But a handful that did focus our discussion. Just so you have it handy, this is the extensive list of other stakeholder groups. So while we did meet with that handful of, of, over the nine meetings With about 12 organizations, The city staff and Trepepi Smith have worked very hard To get the word out and to contact. You can see literally dozens of city organizations. I will say, as I think I mentioned before, Our firm has worked with 475 cities and done this over 600 times. It's not a surprise to me that when there is a division on the council And with many city organizations who have, have connections to members Who are on both sides, that they may not have wanted To kind of stick their head into the tiger's mouth on this issue. But the city staff and Trepepi Smith did reach out to everybody And contact all these groups and to offer them the opportunity To have stakeholder meetings.
If I may ask a quick question? On the ones that didn't, that either declined or did not respond, Do you have which ones actually declined? And did you actually hear back from certain stakeholders Saying that they don't want to be part of the process because they don't want this? Or because they don't think that they're gonna be able to, like, look at maps?
Well, we do have that list of, of who we got no response from And who just, they didn't really give reasons if they were declining to participate. They simply declined the invitation. So we, we can provide you with that list. And then for your discussion, oh, yes.
Sorry, can you go back one slide? So these are the list of organizations that were contacted About holding meetings, but they either declined or did not respond. Am I correct?
Yes.
So Glendale Historical Society did not respond at all? Or didn't?
I, I don't know.
These are part of the list, it's kind of Glendale Memorial Coalition, Chamber of Commerce, Glendale Bar Association, Armenian Society of Los Angeles, all the homeowners groups, Hoover High, Korean Glendale Sister City Association, League of Women's Boarders.
Yeah, this was, the city and Trepepi Smith were trying to be Very expansive in the list of who they invited.
I'm very surprised that either, I, I, that's why I'm asking.
ANC, ANCA.
Who did not respond.
Armenian Assembly of America, Glen Oaks Homeowners Associations, Lions Club. It's, it's really surprising that none of these, Because these are the groups that are typically very involved In everything that goes on, not all of them at the same time. But there are just like this 50 little groups That they get involved in every issue, maybe 10 of them on one issue.
Agreed.
30 of them. But I'm surprised that none of them even responded to any of those issues.
Let me introduce Jen Netwig from Trepepi Smith, Who has been working closely with city staff on the outreach.
Yeah, good evening, council members. As I mentioned, my name is Jen Netwig. I'm at Trepepi Smith, and I can kind of speak to the methodology Behind the outreach that took place. So following the November city council meeting Where we got direction to hold these dedicated stakeholder meetings In collaboration with city staff. We reached out to the full list that you see here. The outreach included an email. The outreach included an email that went out to everyone, all of the organizations, that included a short survey where they could respond, and we said, take 90 seconds. They could just select, yes, I'm interested, yes, contact me, and we'll follow up to schedule. In addition to that first email, they got a follow-up to say, we haven't heard from you, here's your deadline, please do respond so we can schedule with you. In addition to those direct emails, we then conducted phone outreach, calling each of the organizations and leaving voicemails if they didn't answer, and trying to then follow up on the emails to coordinate these meetings. And then from there, after we've left a voicemail, after we've made that initial touch point, that's where some of the organization, you know, responsiveness fell off. And so if they said they'd call us back, and then that eventually led to them, you know, not really being interested, or, you know, not necessarily explaining the reason behind the lack of follow-through there. But, you know, there were multiple attempts to contact people, and then from there, we also coordinated with the city to do targeted follow-up. If people did respond to the survey, for example, but then it was just a matter of coordinating the scheduling, we also followed through on those efforts as well. So a little bit of a combined effort there to make sure that we contacted through a variety of means and then did our best to follow up and get those things scheduled.
Yeah, because when, some of the reasons that I heard from the council, before I got on council, because I attended almost every meeting, was it's not only the, the CVRA, basically the, what the CVRA is for is not the, the rights of protected class or voting rights of protected class, it was also the rights of people who live in South Glendale, for example, and they're renters. But even on this list, it's Glendale Tenants Union. They didn't even participate in this, and that's, that's really surprising. So I think this is the reason that, let, let's continue, but I'll, I'll make my comments later. Thank you so much.
And this is actually my last slide. So this is, at the top, the, the five that I mentioned earlier, the, the three kind of, let's highlight is focus maps, options in the top left, and then the two that the various community groups asked be included in the stakeholder meetings. And then below it is the five other maps that were specifically endorsed by at least one person. So this is somewhat of a summary slide of what has gotten interest. But of course, all the maps are available on the interactive review map. So that is my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have now or after the, the public comment. And again, you can give whatever direction you want tonight. If we are going to go forward, if the council's direction is to continue and go forward, I would encourage the council to try to narrow down the pool of maps, perhaps to these 10, you know, and at least make it easier for individuals to review which maps are on the table.
Can I, I don't know if you have questions, if you don't have questions for Doug, I, I wanted to briefly touch on the charter language, it's very brief, died when we have a PowerPoint.
Number, Saki and Harpat can have.
That's fine, I'll defer, I'll defer. The city attorney can.
Thank you. So just briefly, Madam Mayor, Mr. Councilman, I apologize. So we've, again, we've provided the chart, the proposed charter language that would implement these, this transition if the council decides to move forward. Obviously, it would allow a transition to districts, expand the council to six council directly elected mayor, put forth the, the duty, role and duties of, of the directly elected mayor, which are in line with what the mayor currently does. There is also a piece to the compensation of the council members that would adjust the compensation. That is, that is one of the items that you had previously provided direction on, and that, that council compensation would be adjusted in the event that the transition to council districts is made. That was, that was the direction I got from the last meeting. The only, so those, those are basically the new things. The one, the one new item, I would say, has to do with the dual candidacy for council and mayor. When we had the discussion last time, the council asked whether someone could run for council or council seat as well as the mayor's seat at the same time. As I explained last time, under state law, that's not allowed, you cannot be on the ballot more than once. But as a charter city, and we conferred with Ms. Leoni on this, it is, you could adopt a charter provision which would allow an individual to run for council as well as the mayor, and this again addresses the issue of, if you have a directly elected mayor where you don't have that, then only those council, those council members whose seat terms expire at the same time the mayor's seat is up, would then have to choose one or the other one to run. And you could amend your charter, or amend the city charter in a way to allow somebody to run for both. Another option to do that, to address that particular issue, is to require a candidate to resign, a council member to resign to run. That was not really discussed the last time, but that's an option that would need some additional legal review because that, there's some constitutional issues there. And the third way to sort of address that issue was to have the mayor have two-year terms. But again, I think from the last discussion we had, the consensus was that the mayor should have a four-year term. So that was the only additional change was if the council wants to direct us to allow an individual to run for council and mayor at the same time, or allow an incumbent to run for council and mayor at the same time, you could provide that direction, and, and we would include that in the next round of revisions that we bring back to you if the council decides to move forward. So that's all I have on those, those particular changes. I apologize. And we would, as we noted in the report, bring back language pertaining to the civil service, civil service system, once we've had that meeting confirmed process with the associations completed.
Okay, I, I think, so we're going to close off taking any more comments, if that's okay. And then we're going to go to Councilwoman Saki first.
So I just want clarification in terms of what are the timelines that we're looking at today? What is it that we have to decide to move forward? I know you just mentioned it, but in a more succinct.
Councilwoman Saki, as Doug noted, August 9th is the drop dead deadline to adopt, to adopt resolutions and ordinances to put this on the ballot. And, but our last regular meeting before August 9th is July 30th. What we are asking for, if council desires to move forward with the process, to provide as much direction as the council feels comfortable on the map. So if you're not willing to select a map tonight, then at least narrow the number of maps so that we can have a further discussion, and then we can do briefings, and then additional public comment if that's the desire. And, and then obviously, if the council wants to move forward on the charter revisions that would accompany this and provide the direction to do so.
And just on the timing issue, agreeing with everything Mr. Garcia just said, I would also add, the sooner the council can make a decision about putting on the ballot, the sooner the discussion can move more to the advocacy of supporters and opponents debating it and aiming at the voters, as opposed to this process of should we put it on the ballot question. So you have until August 9th the drop dead, but the sooner you can make the decision, the better.
And before you go, Mr. Johnson, so you've done this a, a number of times for a number of communities, looking at the turnout, and I'll be honest with you, from my perspective, the participation seems very low. How does that compare with other jurisdictions who've gone through a similar exercise?
There really are two camps that we run into. One is where there is a group that is repeatedly run for office, lost, often a Latino or Asian American group, but not always. Sometimes it's a regional group, where there's a, a history of running and failing, and the feeling that the district would allow them to elect someone. When it's that kind of grassroots effort of a kind of out group, you get a lot of interest, because they've been working on campaigns, they've been putting their time and blood, sweat and tears into campaigns and losing. So it's not a big transition for them to put their blood, sweat and tears into this issue. Then there's the jurisdictions that are doing it because of a legal threat. That tends to be crickets, because they're just doing it because someone from out of town is forcing them to, and they don't have the $2 million to spend to defend themselves. So you really get the two camps. There used to be, prior to the California Voting Rights Act, there used to be really two or three cities a year that would switch. They would get to a certain size, or they would have a rapidly growing Latino population and decide to make the switch. And that was more about this pace. People who were really engaged and really interested in city affairs and had strong opinions would, would attend the meetings, but there'd be no real grassroots feeling. The grassroots really come when you have either a protected class or a neighborhood that feels just completely locked out, and they turn out in numbers. Otherwise, it is pretty quiet. This is a very, this isn't police officers on the street of the quality of your sidewalks. This is how do we decide who gets to make those decisions that matter to people day to day?
And again, I, I do have concerns about that list of organizations, many of whom have regular meetings and our lack of ability to try and make some sort of inroad into having those conversations about a process like this.
Just drawing on experience on that, these were groups that chose not to respond because they didn't want to, as I said, put their head in the tiger's mouth. I think, you know.
Do you get that as a response, or are you making assumptions?
I'm making assumptions based on 400.
So I think I would highly recommend that you don't make such assumptions on our organization.
Based on, based on having done this 475 times, and, and if they don't want to get dragged in the middle of this, they don't want me to mention their name dragging them in the middle of this. What I was going to follow up on that with, I, as you have all commented, a number of these groups are groups that you all hear from and talk to, I, I don't know, but I suspect on at least a weekly basis, I suspect if you ask them, they might get more involved. But they're not going to respond to the city process and the, and official city representatives asking them to stick their head in this debate.
Mr. Leoni, have we had that as an issue before? Where, where, when staff reaches out and, or the city reaches out, our organizations are non-responsive because it's not the council members? I know it's not, but I want to hear.
Right. Mayor Satyriyan, not across the board. There has been, from time to time, depending on the topic of the conversation or the community meeting that we invite them to, but they've usually have been responsive. Yeah, I wouldn't say they don't respond to staff's invitations.
Can I just briefly address, I can't speak to the, the specific outreach and what the responses are going, but I, I did attend all, almost all the stakeholder meetings themselves, and despite our efforts to get them to express one way or the other how they felt or whatever, that was very clear they didn't want to do that. Like, so I can agree with Doug that that was hesitancy, whether it was because they don't want to be in the tiger's mouth of the dispute between, or the disagreement, you know, amongst the council or not, that was probable. We said, either let us know how you feel as an individuals, or let us know how you feel as an organization about this. And it was made very clear to us, they were not going to tell us how they felt as an organization.
So I, I think, you know, at least for me, I would really like to know, because I don't think I've ever seen any of our organizations hesitate to have a position on things. And if they're positioned to not participate, it was because they don't believe in it. I, as a, as the mayor or council member, would want to know that that's the reason that they didn't participate, because that also gives me insight on what they see as their, or what the organization's position is on this issue. And so whatever notes you may have on any of the organizations, you know, I, I would really like to see that, because that is feedback in itself. It's not feedback on the maps, but that it's feedback.
100%. And then notes we have are who declined to participate. There was no, if someone said, we don't support this idea, and so we don't want to meet on it, we would have shared that with you, and none of them said that.
No one said that?
Right.
Okay.
And that, those are my questions for now, and I would actually like to hear from the public as well, since the hour is getting.
Well, we have Councilmember Brotman, then.
Of course. Yeah. I just, I just have, I want, I, I am interested in talking about some of the maps and some of the differences between the focus maps and, and hearing that again, but maybe I'll hold off on that. One question I have is, you know, you had some people say Glendale isn't big enough, and other people say Glendale is big enough. So, you know, and I apologize if we've discussed, and I think we have discussed this, but within LA County, we're the fourth largest city, right? LA, we know is districted, Long Beach is, Santa Clarita is, correct?
Just newly.
Newly, newly. And we're not, could you give a sense of cities of our size, cities of 200,000 across the state of California, for instance? Are there many out there that are our size that are still at large? Or is it, are we now really kind of an outlier?
So let me give a two-part answer. The first is now with the California Voting Rights Act, we're an outlier, because there's been so many challenges under that. Before the California Voting Rights Act came around, we were, we used to do this talk a lot. Cities that were 150,000 to 250,000 in population were the cities that debated this a lot. And it was kind of a flip of a coin, if in that range, cities were by district or not. And even when they debated it, it would be a flip of a coin whether they switched. That was the range where this debate happened. Above 250,000, with only a couple of exceptions, everyone was districts. And below 150,000, with only a couple of exceptions of, of voting rights situations, everyone was at large. So it's no surprise that this is a contentious debate, because prior to this CVRA kind of whacking a whole bunch of cities over the head, we are right smack, you're right, 200,000, we're right smack in the middle of the range where this debate would often be held, and some folks would say, yes, we should switch, some would say, no.
So it's not obvious then, you know, there's no clear answer of whether we are at the size where we should be districted. You could go both ways, but okay. Okay, yeah, I'd like to hear from the, the public.
Councilmember Ajari?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the only way to describe the attendance is pathetic. I don't think there's been an issue that this city has been involved with that has shown such apathy and disinterest by the public. There certainly is no cry or call to go to district. It's not something that the community wants. If I, in my younger days, if I were to call a girl and say, you want to go out with me, and they wouldn't answer, or they would tell me no, that's a pretty clear indication that I'm not her guy. And I think that's what we're seeing by this large number. I think it would be an assumption to say that they don't want to put their head in the lion's mouth, because our community groups, many times, put their, put their head in the lion's mouth, from Grayson to Shoal Canyon to roadway design, to apartments, to rent control, to all these things, they are not shy. I think this council is tone deaf. If we don't realize that the city residents are telling us that they do not want districts, and for us to force this issue on the ballot is an absolute mistake. We have to listen to what they're, oh my gosh. Did we get the beep, or was I yelling loud enough for it to?
You could hear it on TV. Yeah.
You're welcome. The mic was.
Yeah, no, I know. Pathetic attendance. Our groups are very much interested, and they do appeal, especially some of these groups whose job it is to be activists, League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, the GCC Political Science Department. I mean, you know, these are folks who, who get into this stuff. I just think that we're, we're forcing this on the city if we were to put this on the ballot. It's nothing that the residents are calling for. As you said, there isn't a group, an ethnic group, a geographical group that's calling for change, for reform. I just think we're making a mistake going this direction. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Mr. Harpatian?
Yes, I think you can add to your list Rossmo and Homeowners Association as well, because they were not contacted to this list.
They're, they're on the earlier list of the ones we met with. We did meet with them.
Oh, no, I understand. They were not contacted, they contacted the city or what have you, and then the meeting was set up. But I think we're kind of watering down the lack of participation, not, not you, in general. Nothing, I know you're doing a great job for the city, and I, I know you've done this for the Glendale Unified, as well as the, the College Board and the maps and everything, and I appreciate that. Not, it's nothing, please don't take it the wrong way.
Not a problem.
But, I lost the trail of my thoughts. Yeah, like Armenian Society of Los Angeles, it has 1,100 members, and they're very active in this city. And most of these, these groups are part of the, our biggest event in the city, which is the state of the city, basically, that the mayor comes in and provides a, a report. And who organizes that? The Chamber of Commerce. the mayor comes in and provides a report. And who organizes that? The Chamber of Commerce, basically. This is their biggest event, and they are on this list. I think, I believe we are rushing this as well. If we really rush into it, we are going to make so many mistakes down the road. And I'm going to stop on here, and then I'd like to hear from the public as well. But this list is the most concerning to me.
All right. We'll take public comment, and then, Mr. Garcia, do I close the public hearing now, or after, or after the public?
Yeah, after the public comment.
Yes. All right.
We have several cards and one caller. Our first card is by Eric.
Speaker of the Council, once again. I'd like to repeat, well, I'd like to agree with everything Councilman Najarian said. He's not tone deaf. He has his finger on the pulse of the city, and he got it right. After attending many district planning meetings, I've come to the realization, there's nothing in districting that will be good for, or beneficial for the residents of Glendale. Rather, there's everything to gain for the government of Glendale. This is a fundamental power expansion of the government of Glendale. We, the residents of Glendale, did not want this to be explored at large. We did not ask for money to be spent researching districting, and we do not want it. The council wants it. Why? Because it'll grow the government and increase their power, pure and simple. People in the audience don't want it. People at home don't want it. To expand on what the powers of a new districting larger government would do, we can ask ourselves, why are bike lanes being developed in Glendale? Why are multi-unit mega-developers making rental units in Glendale? Why aren't new single-family homes being built instead? What is up with the bike lane development on Verdugo Wash, the question, Lockerson Avenue, and where next? Glen Oaks, Pacific Central, Downtown Brand? Glendale Avenue, why? The agenda of these leftists is to remove individuality from the citizenry and you, the families of Glendale. They want you not to own homes, because land-owning is the age-old method of individuality. I own it. You can't tell me what to do. Now we are all going to be stuffed in these prison-looking, no-culture, concrete high-rises and abysmal congestion in the years to come if this districting and this expansion of government sets forth. You know, if I wanted to live in New York City, I would have lived in New York City. I live in Glendale. It's a family town. It's a small, quiet town. Generations of people live here. Generations of businesses operate here, and generations have operated under the current city charter and the rotation of mayor and the regular elections of our council members. It has worked for years. It is still working. Even though there are political divides, it is working. None of us have asked for this. We just saw a list of organizations that usually throw their head in the ring and have a lot of dogs in the fight, and they have not participated. That is, as a golfer would like to do, lick their finger and put it in the air and see which way the wind is moving, adhere to that sign. Those are the...
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Mike, Michael Morgan, or Mike M., Michael M.
He left. It is Michael Morgan.
Okay.
He was.
The next public comment is by Maro Yakopian.
Based on things that I've been hearing, City Attorney Garcia, in your response to Councilman Najarian, you made, admitted some very truthful statements, actually, which caught my attention. The issue of districting, the real reason has been sidestepped. The districting efforts really, as you have pointed out, have been driven and guided, in part, by the quote-unquote "policy preferences" of certain council members. And that's quite true. A truthful statement that there are three politically progressive council members here who are trying, in my opinion, to ruin the city. But in the beginning, let's not forget how this all started, this districting. Remember, there's a lot of fearmongering going on, right? Putting fear in the city, in the citizens, that if we didn't district, we would be in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. Sound familiar, everyone? The saber rattling, that laws would be broken if we didn't start acting in a progressive way? Well, we know this to be fearmongering. The CVRA was implemented to specifically address the needs for Latinos and other constitutionally protected classes, to help them elect candidates of their choice. Glendale, we've had great representation of Latinos. Richard Reyes, Richard Garcia, Carl Rajio, Gus Gomez, Frank Quintero, one of the longest-serving council members in Glendale's history. I mean, it doesn't seem like this is the problem, everyone, the Latino representation. In fact, I don't think the city is being compelled to do anything. In fact, in 1989, Glendale's city attorney, Frank Manzano, told the council, he did not believe Glendale could be sued for going, for not going to districts, because, quote, "The current system is not hindering minority candidates." So where's the problem? Neither Latinos nor any other constitutional protected class of voters have complained about the lack of representation. I haven't seen Latino groups fighting for districting. The only advocates have been mainly white, extreme progressives. It's abundantly clear that they are, they initially disguise their advocacy for districting by using Latinos in our city as their shield to infiltrate with extremism. All right? If you're wondering, socialists are not a protected class under the law, deserving of their own district. Also, tenants, Mr. Garavichin, are not a protected class under the law. In fact, someone showed me how the voices of anyone living south of the 134 is not being heard in an at-large election, when there are more people living south of the freeway than north or in any other region of the city. For everyone who wants a simple example, the city is asking what we want on our burgers before asking us if we're vegetarians.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to thank both Eric and Maro for their two speeches before me. They hit a lot of buttons. I don't want to have to repeat myself. But actually, you know, when I ran for city council for the first time in 2011, I called for council districts, based not on population, but on location and topography. Then it switched to population, okay? Now, you know, you ask people to participate in a survey, and you get, what, 100 people? Maybe 200, 300 people? Out of a city of 200,000 people? What does that tell, tells me, people don't care about council districts. And I was all for it in 2011. So I'm the first at Asardi Kasakian. He and I agreed at one time about council district, and then I changed my mind. I changed my mind. One of the reasons I changed my mind, I couldn't see the idea of having a mayor for four years who was a dictator. Not a fair and balanced, but a dictator. And I didn't want to see that for four years. Now, Najarian is the only lawyer on council who can challenge Mr. Garcia. And he says, "Look at the law, Mr. Garcia, our city attorney." I think he understands the law better than you do. What's your axe, sir? What is your axe to push for this council districts? We don't have a minority people in this city who's not being represented, as mentioned by Maro Yakopian. We don't have a problem here. Now, if you want to do this based on location, okay, we can go back to that. But that's not the law, unfortunately. Low public turnout. So, you have a population of 200,000 people, and nobody cares, basically. Only Mike Mohill cared back in 2011, and it went to deaf ears. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our final public comment is by Ellen Durham. We had a caller, but the call dropped.
Mayor Satrian, members of the council, I'm Ellen Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. I understand the council's concern about the list of non-responsive organizations, and this is just my own experience and the experience of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association with respect to Tripepe Smith, but I wanted to share it. I attended the first three public outreach meetings for council districting and signed in. I'm also on the board of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. Sometime later, Tripepe Smith, I think it was Madeline Wilson, contacted me as a board member and asked if our association would allow them to make a presentation to the board. I said I'd have to check back after, you know, and let them know. And, you know, I did confirm that we would like to have a presentation. Tripepe Smith was quite frequent in communicating with me about the date of the meeting, which got changed at least once. The location of the meeting wasn't determined until a few days before. And Madeline kept emailing me. It's like, where's this meeting going to be? You know, where do we have to go? And, of course, Doug Johnson came, Tripepe Smith, and Mike Garcia. They came to do the presentation for the board. I think the reason the board didn't take a position on districting is, we have not surveyed our membership or had any feedback from the general membership, so the board wasn't going to take it on themselves to, you know, opine on behalf of the organization. But anyway, I just wanted to share that, because I found Tripepe Smith to be quite determined to present to our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Satrian. The caller is back online. Would you like to take the comment? Okay, we have Susan Brusalian on air. Susan, you have three minutes. You're on air.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Susan Brusalian, 35-year resident of the city of Glendale. The city of Glendale is not suitable for districting. There are no distinct minority-populated areas here in Glendale, and no minority groups have raised any concerns about being nonrepresented. The California Voters Act works better for larger cities like Los Angeles. The presentation of districting at council meetings and the over $200,000 the city paid for workshops during the last year have seriously lacked adequate advertising to educate the residents of Glendale and is very misleading with the information presented. These workshops were poorly attended, and at least two were canceled, because no one was in attendance. And as other people have mentioned, people don't care. The ballot question won't be about whether to implement districting, but whether to approve a predetermined map selected to go on the ballot. If I understand correctly, salary increases for council members and for an elected mayor are also going to be on the ballot. The majority of Glendale residents are unaware of this proposed change, and how districting could lead to corruption, discrimination, and encouraging inexperienced candidates to run for council, simply seeking a job, paying a high salary. Glendale has functioned well with an at-large representation of five council members who together represent the needs of the entire city and its residents. Districting will forever disrupt the way we know our city today, and most residents want to know that they can reach out to all five council members when they need something, not just one. Please stop forcing this on our city. We are doing just fine the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was the final public comment.
We're going to close the public hearing. Any comments from my colleagues or additional questions?
My name is...
Councilmember Brotman, please.
Okay. I have some general comments. I think there's still, there's, there's a big misunderstanding about how we got here and what led up to this. And I keep hearing people say the same thing again and again, and they're, they're not listening, because I know we've answered this question. So, you know, we heard about disguised advocacy, talking about, you know, minority districts. No, I mean, we started this thing very clearly a long time ago, talking about a policy interest in districts. I, when I first ran for council, heard a lot about this issue. The second time I ran, two years later, I also heard a lot about this issue, generally from people in South Glendale, generally from renters. Renters feeling that they're not represented. South Glendale feeling that it's not represented. So where I came from, and I've always made this clear, is that I think, from a policy perspective, districts make sense, simply because of the ability of districts to provide better geographical representation, better socioeconomic representation, and better constituent services, because you have people that are closer to the community that they serve. There are other things that I had talked about, and my colleagues, some of my colleagues talked about too, which is, you know, barriers to entry for running for election when you're running in a, in a smaller geographic area will bring in different voices onto council than we have now. So that was very much something that I've been talking about. I know Councilmember Kasakian's talked about that, and I know Councilmember, or Mayor Satrian has talked about that. Now, on top of that, layered on top of that, we have all these lawsuits going around, right? Cities getting sued, and it doesn't matter if they are able to show that districting doesn't lead to a majority-minority district. They're getting sued, and they're spending, you know, large sums of money, and generally, they're settling. And I think, Mr. Garcia, maybe you can answer this question. I don't think there is any city that has prevailed in a CVRA lawsuit around districting at all. Is there a single city that has prevailed?
Other than Santa Monica and the Court of Appeal decision, which was ultimately overturned? That's correct.
Right. And Santa Monica has run up something like 20-some million dollars in, in legal exposure. I don't know if I'm making, I heard of very big numbers that...
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10? Okay, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Eight to 10, still a big number. That probably in settlement, they're gonna, I mean, unless they take this all the way and they win, which is possible, they may settle and end up spending a whole lot of money. So, the way I thought about it was, here we are, we have a majority on council that believes that this is a better approach for the city, and we know that cities are getting sued. We're one of the largest cities now that is not districted. I can't say we're going to definitely get sued, but I think it's a distinct possibility. And it doesn't matter whether we have a large Latino population or a large Asian population. All that matters is some clever lawyer out there thinks he can make a lot of money suing us, tying us up, spending a lot of money, and then we end up settling. And that's what this is about. So there's, there's just, there's just confusion. People coming up and up here and saying, "Well, it's not going to produce a Latino district." Maybe not, but that wasn't really the point in the first place. That's where the legal issue comes into play, but that really wasn't the point among a majority of this council. You know, and I also hear this, I hear this, you know, there's lack of interest in the community. People aren't coming out. And there's something to that, for sure. I am... I am also a bit surprised that some of these groups has not participated, but I will tell you that it depends on who you talk to. You know, if you're talking to homeowners associations, you're talking to the realtors, you're talking to the Chamber of Commerce, they say, "The system is working for us." Yes, the system is working for them, but when you talk to renters and people that are lower income, is the system working for them? I don't think they're gonna tell you it is. They're not gonna say, "It's not broke, don't fix it." They're gonna say, "It's broke, please fix it." So, you know, there's selection here in terms of who you're talking to, who you're hearing from, but I think this idea that this, that there is not support is because the people that would support it are the people that tend to participate the least in the political process, they're the people that tend to get left behind, and that is just the reality. So, I, you know, also this idea of Mr. Moheal's about districts, he changed his mind because he thought there were districts based on topography. I mean, there's no such thing in the United States of America and never has been, except maybe the fact that every state gets two senators, but Congress and every level of government that has districts, it's always by population. It couldn't possibly be any other way. So the thought that, you actually thought that is a little bit frightening. In any case, I don't, you know, I don't know where I am on this. I think that there's, you know, we could go ahead and bring this to the voters, or we could, we could pull back, and I think there's a strong likelihood, or I should say a strong possibility, that we get sued, we would probably end up settling. I shouldn't even be saying this stuff, but, anyway, I'm speculating. I'm just saying, you know, here's a possible scenario, is we get sued and we end up going to five districts by council decision, and maybe that's the way this thing goes, and then maybe we come back to the voters at some future date and say, "Hey, guys, we have five districts now, let's talk about maybe a sixth district," or "Let's talk about maybe having an elected mayor, so we at least have one person that's representing the whole city." That's another approach we could take. We could sit back and wait and see what happens. But I just want everybody to understand that the genesis of this was a policy preference that we never had, was always shared by a majority of the people sitting behind this dais. And I think I covered everything I wanna say. Thanks.
And more.
And more, probably, too much.
All right, Councilmember Kasakian.
All right, thank you. So I think that there were some very good points that were made by Councilmember Brodmann about how this came about, and I think none of that has changed, despite, you know, this effort to claim that the Santa Monica decision has somehow put this all in question. I think the law as it's written does potentially open up many cities in California to lawsuits, and we've seen that happen time and again, and I think ultimately, the question becomes, do we want to be forced to do something, or do we want our residents to have a voice in their own future in determining what the districts look like, what the boundaries look like? And the reason why I made the suggestion initially of having, I was one of the individuals who made the suggestion of having six plus one, is because there is a concern of individuals perhaps feeling ignored by their district representatives and not having any other council member possibly to go to, and in that regard, having a citywide elected official. An ideal situation would be to have two citywide elected officials. There are cities that have had that. Unfortunately, that will not protect us from the prospect of someone starting a lawsuit against the city or filing a lawsuit. I think that a lot of, a lot has been said and misrepresented, misrepresented in terms of the motives of this and tried to put a partisan spin on it as to its individuals who adhere to a certain ideology, and I think that's unfortunate that people have tried to characterize it as such. I want to see what's best for the city. I do not want to see us forced into something that isn't by the will of the people. This ultimately will go to the voters, and the voters could approve it or disprove it. If they approve it, that's how, again, democracy works. If they disprove it, that's not to say that we won't end up with districts anyways, it just won't be the districts that this process, which was a process to do outreach to community groups and get feedback, came up with. Having said that, you know, ultimately, again, I'm not against necessarily halting this process. At this point, I would do want to know what the ramifications would be of either putting it on the November ballot, or if we combine it with other charter amendments, if there's some cost savings, because, look, at the end of the day, if this is gonna cost us a certain dollar amount, which we don't have the stomach for in a November cycle, it may be something that we may not address at this moment, but I am comfortable with us at least continuing this exercise to get as much feedback and input. Having said that, I do want, I would like to see at least more groups engaged. I heard the back and forth and the answers, Mr. Johnson and from my colleagues, the questions about who was, you know, who we reached out to. This is a complicated, it's a complex issue, and it requires, I just know from conversations I have with people who are engaged and plugged in, like people like Mr. Durham, sorry to single you out, Ellen, but how long it takes to really talk about it, to wrap one's head around it, let alone in just a brief conversation or a cold call or an email, and explaining to people really what are the choices that we're facing. You know, it's far too easy to oversimplify it and say, "It's those people that want this, and they want it for this reason." It's really not. At the end of the day, you know, it's not something that I'm personally or directly benefiting from, nor is anyone, I think, anyone up here. It's ultimately about what's best for the city. Anyways, with that, I'll just end my comments here, because I can see some folks are a little tired, as are we, and I don't want to belabor the point.
Councilmember Osatrian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Councilmember Kasakian that this is a complicated issue. By rushing it to put it on the November ballot, I believe we will make so many mistakes. One thing I would like to hear in the future meetings is, the cities that went to districting, you know, adopted districting, either willingly or because they were sued, what difference did it make in their elections? Did they achieve what the CVRA's goals are or not? Because in Glendale, we have Glendale Unified School District and College Board. I can tell you, College Board did not make any difference when they went to districts. Glendale Unified, in last elections, 12 of the incumbents didn't run, so we have new members, but before that, they did not even challenge the incumbents. Yes, there was an incumbent that lost, but had nothing to do with CVRA, it was in North Glendale, and let me just, a white candidate lost and a white candidate won. Let me just be very, very simple on that. Voters have decided already on this issue, I believe, twice. I know that 2015, it was on the ballot, and it was voted down with big numbers, and if we rush into it and put it on the ballot when this many organizations are not even involved, and it gets turned down, if there is a threat of a lawsuit, we can't even be sued at that time as well, they don't care. If they wanna sue the city, they're gonna sue it one way or the other. They don't care if the voters don't want it, the residents don't want it. And if you look at these three maps, I'm pretty, you know, good in reading these maps, even, these are confusing for me. And when you look at the percentage of the voters, you know, like Hispanic voters, white voters, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, the, in all six, all three maps, they were kind of the top three. When you have six districts, only one district has 27% Hispanic voters in it. So we couldn't carve out an area to say, "Okay, this area at least will have one protected class for another three, four elections." So, and the other ones are like 20%, 22%, 14%, 13%. In at-large election, if a candidate with a Hispanic surname wants to run, we have 16,000 registered voters, Hispanic registered voters in Glendale. It's, if you are a candidate that can attract your block to come out and vote, game over. You get elected much easier in at-large election for minority groups. I just don't wanna call them minority groups, but people to get elected if they can appeal to voters. Look, I won in at-large elections, and I lost in at-large elections, and I won in at-large elections. It all tells you that if you do it right, you campaign hard, you'll win. If you don't campaign, you just put your name on the ballot, either you are in a district or you're in at-large elections, you're not going to win. I don't care what your background is. As far as South Glendale and the renters, I appreciate that, I understand that there is that tendency to give renters, per se, a chance to get elected. As far as South Glendale needs goes, look what this council has done, and look what the previous councils had done. Rent control issue, right-to-lease issue, tenant landlord comedies were put together. This council really cared about what the needs of South Glendale was and the needs of the renters were, so we have almost two rent control, if you will, in Glendale because this council really cared about the needs. What happened in my area, Rodrigo Woodlands? We had one historic district formed, 33 or 34 homes. That's it. The rest of it is what goes on in the general needs of the city. It's the same as every neighborhood has the same needs to function. So I don't think, if the council, this council or previous council really ignored the needs of South Glendale and the renters, I would appreciate that, I would understand that. But even the tenants' union didn't participate in this process. They are part of the list, that they didn't respond or they didn't even call you back or what have you. So as far as the lawsuit goes, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball. I, they threatened the city to, you know, with a letter in 2013 or 14, and they've done their own research to see if they file a lawsuit and the city fights it, are they going to, they have a chance to win in courts or not. Santa Monica is maybe winning or dragging it out, they didn't lose outright because they have a good case, and Glendale has a better case. If we go to districts, we're taking the rights away from people of South Glendale, the two or three districts that are in South Glendale, to choose the candidate they want who lives in another area. I was part of that study in 2015 and 16. I had more votes in South Glendale than the candidate who was running in South Glendale, from South Glendale. So the question was, people had a choice, and I think that's what being an American is all about, to have a choice. People wanna have a choice. We have to give them the choice. Whoever they want, they can put up here. You can't fight with the voters. There is no way that you can fight against the voters. In small areas, if you have smaller districts, or you have districts which is a small area, first of all, the problem that I have with district is, there are, I have so many issues with it, but these are a few of them, that they are, the population has to be the same in all the districts. Am I correct? That the number of people who live in that district? But it doesn't tell you that how many registered voters are in that district and how many of these registered voters voted. So one district could have a council member with 2,000 votes, and the other district could have a council member who had 12,000 votes, for example. So that disproportion as to how many people are registered in those districts to vote and how active they are in voting is a huge issue for me. And it's, we always say it's easy to campaign in a district because it's a smaller area, but it's always easy to manipulate and pour a lot of money into one district that the special interest groups do and take over every single district in five years, or 10 years, or six years. So that, these are the pros and cons, but I think the lack of participation, I participated in two public meetings, and I'm, kudos to you, I give it to you, have a lot of patience when there's six people and three of them are from the city, are sitting there, and you go through your presentation and answer every question for a couple of hours, two, three hours, whatever those hours were. And the fact that people don't participate, the fact that all of these organizations that are 80% of that one large event in Glendale, which is the state of the city, they don't participate, it tells you that they don't want districts. I think we are really rushing into this. I believe we need to take our time and do more research and find out what is the right thing for Glendale. If it's the renters' rights, only we want people who are renters to be presented, that is not part of the CVRA. You can't force districting based on that. The CVRA is very clear as to what the fundamental bases are for the, for the, for the CVRA. And as I mentioned, we have 16,000 Latino voters, 3,800 to 4,000 Korean-Americans, 5,400 Filipino-Americans. If they, if we say, okay, there may be some groups in a district that are like-minded and they can come together, they can do the same thing in at-large elections, and I tell you, if you campaign right within those minority groups, game over, you win time and time and time again. I'm almost there, I'm sorry. I know, I know it's getting late, but it's important to really understand each other and do the right thing. I think we can just pause this on putting this on the ballot for November and really dive through these maps, because these maps do not, as was mentioned, Rodrigo Woodlands can relate to South and relate to North, but many of these maps are not showing. Give me just one more second, and I will, I will... Yeah, as I mentioned, oh, one other thing is, right now, if you have districts with council as well, you will have three maps for three different jurisdictions in one election, and right now, so many voters were confused in this last election because the GUSD and College Board and the city, they were not all aligned, and we received so many phone calls, "How come so-and-so's name is not on the ballot or on my ballot?" And if you go further north, and they are part of the city, but they're in county portion, they're annexed to the city, they can vote for the district, not district, for GUSD and college, but they cannot vote for city council. So having all these maps all over the place, it's, it is going to be very confusing. I think if the answer is that we have to go to districts, I don't think putting it on the ballot this, in November, is the answer to it. We haven't gotten sued, we haven't received a letter, even if you receive a letter, you have time to react to it, it's not that you receive a letter, you have to respond to it tomorrow, and the cost of the elections, if you go, you know, have our own election this time, it's gonna be several hundreds of thousands that, as Councilmember Kasakian mentioned, I don't have a stomach for it either. So I'm gonna stop here. I think we need to get our organizations involved, we need to get our people involved. People have to know what's going on, and they, if they, if they don't want it, we didn't have, we have to fight it. I mean, we, our job is to protect the rights and will of the residents of Glendale, and that's where, that's where I am.
If I may, just on the request for a date of what's happened in other cities?
Yes.
There's two things. I co-wrote a paper about eight years ago, looking at the early cities that switched, we'll get you that. We'll get you that. It was somewhat random. And then the San Francisco Chronicle, just a couple of months ago, spent a year digging into this and looked at mid-sized cities. They didn't look at everybody, but found that about, and we'll get you the articles, but about a third of them saw a significant increase in Latina representation, maybe closer to half. Good chunks saw no change, and then about ten percent of them, actually, the councils became more white. So, we'll get you both of those studies.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Najarian?
And I'll be brief. The Glendale Tenants Union, Housing Rights Center, and Neighborhood Legal Services. These are the organizations that represent tenants in South Glendale, and they had no comment on the districting. So, to say that this was a big burning issue with tenants in South Glendale is not borne out by the three major organizations whose task it is to represent them legally, to represent them politically, and to find them housing. That's point one. Point two, I am really getting tired of having to tell the city attorney that the Supreme Court opined that it makes no ruling that the Santa Monica at-large district violates the California Voting Rights Act. That's what the law says. To say anything else, to sugarcoat it, to twist it, is not true. That's what the Supreme Court said. It sent it back for some additional discussion to the trial court, but as it stands now, the Supreme Court did not invalidate Santa Monica's at-large district, period, period. Don't sugarcoat it any other way. That's what it says. And if you'd like me to, I'll run into my office now and bring the opinion and read it verbatim as to what the majority opinion said.
All right. I'm going to try to keep my short. I do know that you want direction on the other items as well, right? Is this for?
Mayor Satrian, yeah. Depends on where the council is, frankly, on putting the districts on the ballot in November. Because I think that kind of answers the question.
Well, I'm hearing from my colleagues that, at the very least, there's looking at maybe just doing this later and not for November. I will say I'm not comfortable with picking any maps. I do want to have a conversation with, I'm going to start dialing those organizations that are listed just to understand what happened. I don't feel comfortable that, you know, the census really like screws over the Armenian community because we don't have actual data. But even the data that's available through political data is not correct. You're basing it off of registered voters. And what we have is roughly forty percent of the population of the city that's considered to be Armenian, and none of the organizations are included in this dialogue. I have a serious issue with that segment being left out of the conversation in general. I wouldn't mind bringing this and having another conversation if my colleagues want to, and narrowing down maps, and then giving it to the charter review for them to make it part of their process. But what I have been interested in for a very long time is cleaning up the civil service, which I think is affecting our, you know, daily work here at City Hall. So, I know that during the briefing, we discussed, you know, at the very least, you know, items like moving from the top three rule to the banding rule, which is what pretty much every other city has, which allows for departments to be able to, department heads to also like look at the longer list of folks that are as qualified as the next and not the top three. And then, you know, whether it's the other, you know, removing obsolete references and whatnot. And I don't know what that would cost on its own, but what I don't want to do is delay those things that we could potentially have on the November ballot. I would be interested to know how much that would cost us if we didn't move forward with the districting for November.
Mayor Satrian, so generally speaking, to put any ballot measure on the ballot for November, the starting cost is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then increases above that, depending on how many measures you put. So, if we, the measures that we had, we were talking about civil service, the districts, the mayor, directly elected mayor, council compensation, that adds a cost. You're probably looking at half a million dollars. But, and the reason, just so you know, the reason for that cost is the November election is an off-cycle election for Glendale. So, what that means is then, what the county registrar does is basically divide up all their costs among the agencies that don't have a regular election that day. And that's our cost. So, it's an expensive cost to hold any charter amendment election in November. And there's just a marginal cost depending on how many measures you actually had. But the first measure in the door will cost you four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we just, City Clerk's Office just double-checked those numbers this afternoon.
And how much would it cost if it was part of our regular cycle?
I would have to get back to you with those numbers.
Yeah, but again, it's a marginal cost at that point because it's our regular election. You're already paying to have an election, for example, 2026, for two seats. Adding the additional cost is probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per measure.
That sucks.
If I may.
Yes.
If, you know, as it relates to the civil service piece of it, we can certainly work with human resources and city managers and see if there's, and we continue to do that, are there ways to address the rules short of amending the charter in the interim to address some of the challenges that we're facing? And we can certainly do that regardless of whether we put forth a charter amendment.
Okay. I do, I do want staff to continue meeting. I do think that the four hundred and fifteen mark, especially if there's some hesitancy across the board to move forward in November, to add that price tag. But if I've misread any of the comments from my colleagues, then correct me.
I would just say I'm not ready at the moment to say I want to pull the plug on November. But I'm also feeling some doubt, so that's kind of what I expressed earlier. So, yeah, I think I need to digest a little bit longer to come to a final position.
And we have until July thirtieth to pick a map.
Right. By July thirty, we have to do everything. That has to be, the map would have to have been selected. We've had to have all the ordinances and resolutions to put that on the ballot. So, again, that's the deadline to do that. We would definitely need direction, not soon after today's meeting, if the council still wants to go forward.
All right. Councilwoman Mark Satrian, you want to say something?
I would say that in terms of this process, you know, at this point, and again, I'm not conclusive one way or another as to where we go for the November ballot. I do want some information. I can get answers from staff. I do have a couple of maps that I think I would prefer. I wouldn't want, at this point, because of everything that's been said, I wouldn't want to bring in any of the other issues, whether it's compensation for council members or any of the other charter amendments for this November ballot because we just had discussion about a charter review committee, and those are items I would rather have a charter review committee delve into rather than muddy the waters of something like this. Again, it all really depends on where the rest of the council stands on this. There are some very clear lines and opinions on one side. But I do want to just say something that, you know, I know that Councilmember Najarian likes to say that, you know, this is, this issue of being sued is somehow dead, or it's done, or that it's, the concern is been addressed by the Santa Monica decision. First of all, I mean, I'm just looking at the League of California City's explanation. I'm not an attorney, and I don't apologize for that, but I'm not an attorney. So, this is just, if you'll indulge me, it says, what did the Supreme Court say? This is a question. This is to help laymen understand, laypeople understand. The Supreme Court rejected the Court of Appeals reasoning. The Supreme Court pointed out that local elections are nonpartisan and that candidates can win with only a plurality, not a majority of votes. It also noted that the CVRA was passed to make it easier to challenge at-large election systems using state law as opposed to federal law. Thus, a plaintiff does not need to prove that the protected class would make up a majority or near majority of a district to establish unlawful vote dilution. Rather, to prove that an at-large election system impairs the ability of a protected minority to elect candidates of its choice, a plaintiff must show that under some alternative electoral system, the protected class would have the potential on its own or with the help of crossover votes to elect its preferred candidate. In assessing whether a plaintiff has met this standard, court must review the facts and circumstances as a whole, including the characteristics of specific locality, its electoral history, et cetera. Anyways, so I'm just saying this because in no way does it say that the CVRA is no longer a law that's applicable to jurisdictions at all. That's not what it says. It just says that the criteria by which it's determined has to be reviewed, and there's uncertainty as to how that's reviewed. And that's why it got kicked down back to the lower court. So, I don't know. Madam Mayor, it's up to you to tell us where we need to go on this.
So, I do hear that some of my colleagues are not done with it. So, I would recommend that we, how much time would you need to digest this and for us to bring it back?
Maybe a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Fine.
Are you okay with that?
May twenty-first. And the sooner the better.
Sure. It's fine.
All right.
Question, Madam Mayor. So, we are bringing it back for, to decide if we're putting it on the ballot for November or continuing the search and research?
Bringing it back to narrow down to the maps that would be then presented. Is that correct?
Correct. And presuming the council on May twenty-first wants to go forward with November. And I think that's what I'm hearing. It's still the open question. Do you want to go forward in November? And if so, do you want to select a map or narrow the maps for further discussion?
I mean, we can bring it back and discuss it, but as far as my position, I think rushing it through and try to put it on the November ballot, if we take some items out or add some items to it, it's not a matter of, you know, it's not that urgent as far as lawsuits go and everything else goes. So, we have time. I think we need to do the right thing for the community and take our time and make sure that the maps are correct. Even in two weeks, I don't know how many local organizations are going to get involved and give us their feedback. I think we're rushing. We just formed a committee. They can look into it. Maybe the members of the community can go to these committee meetings and, you know, voice their opinion as well in those meetings, and they will give us a feedback. I'm willing to hear it back again in two weeks, but I think we need to be careful as to, if you want to put it on the November ballot.
Okay. All right. Would it need to come back as a hearing?
Doesn't need to at this point. I mean, we could continue to that date.
Why don't we do that and not as a hearing?
Action item.
Just as an action item, and then we can make that decision then and figure out what we're doing. Okay. All right. No other comments on this moving forward? All right. Next item.
Next, our discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. And the first item is Mayor Satrian's request for a report on a Code of Conduct slash Rules of Decorum for the City Council Meetings moved from April thirtieth, 2024 council meeting.
I'm going to try to keep this brief, but I don't know why these items, I'm sorry. I don't know why these items A and B were separated out. I was hoping to have one report back. But in looking at some of the rules that we have in the books that haven't actually been looked at in a very long time, I was hoping that staff can bring back some Code of Conduct and rules for our meetings. This is something I've also talked to our police chief about, who has noted that other cities are actually looking into this. So, I would really like our city attorney, along with our police chief and our city clerk, to look at some ways that, I guess, for the Code of Conduct, just what other cities are doing and how we can better improve that. But then, I'm going to just wrap this up under, you know, whatever's under B because I just want one report back on the same day. I don't want to split it. But the oral communication and public comments on how we can make our meetings more efficient. I know, for example, Burbank has, you know, a one-minute or three-minute card. Other jurisdictions have, like, you block out one hour for all public comments, and then you move on to your action items. Everything's like, you know, pulled into one. And so, I just want some options for us to look at on how we can make our meetings more efficient.
Quick suggestion on that. Looking at our agenda, item number five, it says, item number six says, community event announcements. But we also have that oral communication combined with that. If that could be changed to community event announcements slash oral communication. So, people will know, you know, if they're coming for the first time, they will understand that they can come in and speak for three minutes as well.
Right. I think I had noted that last time, and then we were also looking at ways for our, even city clerk, for, you know, changes on what would be on the cards, what the rules would be of the house, like outside. So, it's really just kind of looking at different ways we can look at our Code of Conduct and our oral communication.
Yeah, I support doing that. I think, I am interested in how other agencies are handling public comment, both, you know, on individual items as well as, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, and look at, see what other alternatives are. So, I'm a yes on bringing a report back to look at options.
City of Los Angeles has like a really long packet, and both for Code of Conduct for the meetings as well as like the oral communication, like a million-one options for it. I'm looking to like simplify more, especially the oral communications and making more efficient.
And I was going to say, Madam Mayor, the only reason we had divided these up into two separate subjects, and we can bring us our report, but they're slightly different. One has to do with like First Amendment rights of the folks that want to come and speak, and the other ones specifically those rules of oral communications that we have to provide under the Brown Act. And some of the work on the decorum, we've done a lot of it already in conjunction with the research you asked us to do. So, there was a possibility we could bring that sooner.
Okay.
And so, that was the only thought. If you want us to bring it sooner, we could probably do that. But if we want to put them both in one report, it'll take a little bit longer.
Madam Mayor, do you require seconds for these requests?
Well, this would require three votes.
Three votes. So, motion second and.
Yes.
And.
I would second the motion if someone.
Yeah, I guess I effectively made the motion.
You can do them together if you want.
Would you like me to read the second item as well into the record because that was not read?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Okay. Item B was Mayor Satrian's request for a report on options for oral communications and public comment on agenda items and matters related to the order of business for council agendas moved from April thirtieth, 2024 council meeting.
Okay, so I'll move that we bring back a report on these two items together.
All right. And then we have a second, but we also have a public comment.
Yes, we have one speaker card, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. No, councilmembers, you are not going to tell me or the public what we can say and not say. This is not Iran and/or Communist China. This is America. Ellen Satrian calling for this Code of Conduct agenda should be the first person to look into the mirror. Your childish behavior. Your childish behavior to be the youngest and first immigrant Armenian-American mayor was an embarrassment to yourself and the city. Council members, you all need to look yourself in the mirror on your own code of conduct before you criticize the public. One, texting when the public comes before you should not be allowed. Two, Dan Brotman, looking at your phone and not listening to the public is very rude. Three, Dan Brotman, walking out on council when a speaker disagrees with you is very rude. Four, Dan Brotman, you leaving council chambers and coming back to announce to the public on TV that you had to release CO2 was very rude and crude. Recently, Ellen and Dan both left council chambers when a speaker was speaking with whom they disagreed. We lost valuable time and a quorum to conduct the council business. Seated Attorney Mike Garcia had to lead council chambers and look for you both in the back room. Garcia had to inform you that the dais was needed for a quorum. Six, Councilman Ara Najarian. In all due respect, years ago, you called me a cockroach because I did not agree with you. You have since apologized and we both moved forward. Seven, no council members can control free speech. Someone can call you, come before the dais and call you all fat, ugly, dumb, and a communist. I am a Vietnam veteran, as you all know, who has served to support the Constitution and the right of the public to say anything they want to say at the council as long as no threatened language is being used. Nine, before criticizing the public, you need to respect the public and the stakeholders of Glendale. And 10, the moment you control free speech, you will be facing a lawsuit. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any speakers or callers? Okay. Yes. Well, before we do, just for the record, no one's trying to take away anyone's First Amendment rights. Just, okay, all right, roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Farpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatran.
Yes. Next.
Next item is Councilmember Kasakian's request for a report on amending the city's investment policy to prohibit investments in or related to the Republic of Azerbaijan.
Madam Mayor and my colleagues, this is a pretty straightforward request for a council policy. Language was shared with me by individuals who've been working on this issue with other legislators within their own body from the Army and Bar Association. I have shared that draft language with the city manager. And I think that now more than ever, there's an imperative for us to uphold certain American values and standards. It is disturbing and unfortunate that just a few days ago, our U.S. Ambassador, Ambassador Libby, the ambassador to Azerbaijan, visited the ethnically cleansed Armenian city of Shushi against his prior comments that he would not visit it under pressure from a government that has engaged in ethnic cleansing, genocide, and continues to hold Armenians captive, hostage against their will and against international law. I think that we need to, as American taxpayers, draw a clear line in support with some of the congressional actions that are moving forward through the House of Representatives and say that our tax dollars will not be a part of efforts to prop up the petroleum dictatorship in Baku.
I'll move that item.
Well, we have one, hold on. We have one caller.
We actually have the city treasurer on the phone, Rafi Manukian.
Sure.
Would you like to hear from us? Mr. Manukian, you're on air. You're able to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, Rafi Manukian, city treasurer, and good morning. I want to qualify my statement by stating that I agree unequivocally that the idea, with the idea of divesting from Azerbaijan on all levels. With all the discussion on divesting from Azerbaijan, some people could be under the false impression that the city of Glendale has investments in Azerbaijan. For the record, California cities are not permitted by state law to invest in foreign countries. And our investment policy is more stringent than the state law. So no, Glendale does not have any investments in foreign countries or in Azerbaijan. Besides, I would never venture in that endeavor. As to reporting to the city manager on an annual basis for our policy, I present a report to the council, the city manager, director of finance, internal audit on a monthly basis, and I present a report to the investment policy advisory board on a quarterly basis. I also publish the portfolio on our website monthly. As it relates to CalPERS and their investment policy, they operate under a different set of rules. And I think if we want to influence PERS policy, we need to get on the PERS board. We need to get elected to state offices like the Assembly and the Senate. We need to get elected to the state treasurer, to the state comptroller, as well as the governor, if we want to influence the PERS policy. I'm not opposed to discussing this issue with the council. However, I just wanted you to know that we cannot and do not invest in foreign countries. Thank you.
So Mayor, I do think that the discussion is warranted. Mr. Manukian, our treasurer, is right in terms of our city policy, but there are other funds that other agencies like CalPERS and others invest in that do have certain investments connected to the nation of Azerbaijan and their sovereign fund. And I think that is a discussion that is worth having. Am I correct in that? Yes, I'm getting that nod. And with that, I'd like to request a formal discussion rather than engaging in one right now at this late hour here on the council at a, at a time in the near future.
Sure. And are you specifically talking about purse or still talking about incorporating something into our local policy even though our local policy says no foreign investments, period?
It's, the entanglements of investments in, in funds that are connected to Azerbaijan are more complex than simply the foreign national, the country of Azerbaijan and its sovereign national fund. There are also companies, unlike in the United States, that are owned by the entity. They can be fossil fuel companies, you know, Turkish Airlines, for instance. In the Republic of Turkey, there's ownership and, and shared. Anyways, again, I do not want to engage in that discussion here. I think the time would be when we can get this agenda item before us.
We got a motion and a second?
Mayor Asatran, we do have a card and a caller.
We'll take him.
All right. Our card is Edgar Magarditian.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council and honorable mayor. It is my first time at a meeting of the Glendale City Council. And quite frankly, I was unprepared for its duration. There was, there's a good analogy about Margaret Thatcher negotiating a rebate back from the European Community by sitting and refusing to leave a meeting. And I think any one of you could give Margaret Thatcher a run for her money. So with that, I wanted to just simply state and rise in support of Councilmember Kasakian's request and say why this is good practice and good policy. It's good practice because the California Government Code requires that local municipalities adopt a prudent investor standard. And what that means is that they have to have the, invest with the care, skill, prudence, and diligence under the circumstances. Now, what does that mean here? Treasurer of the city of Glendale is correct. Glendale does not currently have any investments in Azerbaijan. That's unequivocal. The investment restrictions added here would be to prohibit indirect investments as well, which are possible, but which the city of Glendale currently does not have. Other local jurisdictions do have investments in Azerbaijan, including Lacer, Lacer, including CalPERS, including other entities in the state of California. So this is good practice and good policy because if we're diligent about being fiduciary for public funds, we want to be aware that certain assets may be the subject of sanctions and litigation that will impair the value of those assets. U.S. Senator Ben Cardin, who is chairman of the Senate Foreign Relations Committee, has said that Azerbaijan must be held accountable. And two weeks ago in the House, bipartisan legislation was introduced to require the State Department to review whether Magnitsky sanctions are responsible, are applicable to the high-level officials in Azerbaijan responsible for the ethnic cleansing. That's a matter for other parties to take on and other parties to do. But the city council of the city of Glendale can decide how it wants its public funds to be invested and it can decide what sort of message it sends. As members of the city council know, in August 2023, while Artsakh was under blockade, the council voted to appropriate humanitarian aid for its sister city of Marktuni. By adopting an investment policy prohibiting investments in Azerbaijan, the city council will be sending a message saying that you can't ethnically cleanse a sister city with impunity. That's all. Thank you so much.
We have one caller?
Yes, we have one caller, Ara Manukian. Ara, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, city council and staff. I want to thank Arti for this initiative. And I would, actually, I want to read this really quick. This is from the city council meeting, which was from August 29th. As the main hub of the Armenian diaspora in the United States, Glendale is deep, has deep ties to Armenia and Artsakh. With this vote, we declare our commitment to the people of Artsakh and our determination to prevent another ethnic cleansing of the Armenian people from their ancestral lands. And this was Mayor Dan Brotman that made that statement. I would propose that the city of Glendale also expand their divestment from any country that supports Azerbaijan militarily and most specifically Israel, who we, it's very well documented that up to 70% of the military hardware, which was used in 2020, which resulted in the ethnic cleansing and continues today, by the way, the ethnic cleansing of the Armenians was illegally supplied to Azerbaijan in violation of the 1993 OSCE arms embargo. So I would call on, and as we know, Ellen, who is now our city mayor, was involved in trying to get Israel to stop their arms shipment. And she actually prevented us from protesting Israel in fear that Zionist Israel would call us anti-Semitic. But it is very important that we send a message to Azerbaijan supporter, namely Israel, that we also will divest from them for their violations of the OSCE arms embargo and supplying weapons to a genocide and ethnic cleansing of the Armenian people of Artsakh. So I ask that the city of Glendale include that in the language to include not necessarily, I mean, specifically Israel and any other countries that have been arming Azerbaijan illegally in violation of the OSCE 1993 arms embargo. Thank you.
And thank you. And that's the final call.
Councilmember Brotman.
I mean, we, this is, I don't, I also don't want to take a lot of time on this, but we did bring an item a couple of years ago.
That was for Turkey. It was not for Azerbaijan.
I thought it was Turkey and Azerbaijan, and it was also fossil fuels. I remember that it was Turkey and Azerbaijan and it was fossil fuels. So I, now, I think what I'm hearing from you, and based on what the city treasurer said, you know, we don't have those investments. So what, when this does come back, I think we just should be specific. What we're talking about now is secondary investments, right? And if we're going to be talking about CalPERS, I mean, that is, that is going to be a very tough road to go down to try to influence CalPERS investment policy. And Rafi was absolutely right. You want to do that, you got to get on the board, you got to get on, you know, Assembly, Senate, and, and it's still going to be very hard. But making, making a statement, calling on them to do that, I think, has some value. And then as for the comment about Israel, we also have to look at how, how many circles out we want to go. We invest in, let's say, Citibank, Chase, JP Morgan. I'm sure we're buying certificates of deposit or whatever, these, these bills that are issued by these banks. Now, these banks do make loans possibly in Azerbaijan. So we should consider that because it can get very big, right? It can mean that we are not investing in any bank that's doing business in Azerbaijan. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing to do. But let's, let's just recognize when it comes back that, that it's multi-layered.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
That's fine.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Farpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatran.
Yes. The other one is, I think it was based off of the budget report, but this is something I've been talking about for a long time. I do want to note that this wasn't just for recruitment updates. I know it's getting late, but I'm happy to send staff what I'm looking for to be included in this report. But I was looking for vacancies based on department, process charts, you know, length of time from opening to hire per department. I wanted to know about community outreach program. I remember back in the day when I was at ANC, Matt Doyle and I used to actually work together on getting both HR and our department heads to Armenian television stations for recruitment, talking about vacancies. And so I have, I have a list of things that I would definitely want in this report. It's not just recruitment. That also includes like, you know, how we hold staff accountable and those processes. So, but it is something that I think that we want to look at as we're going through our budget and our processes, especially when we keep talking about vacancies and how we want to also make sure that we're creating a supportive work environment for our employees.
One, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just one point of clarification or question.
I'm sorry, but I didn't read the item into the record.
Oh.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Let me read it. Item D is Mayor Asatran's request for a report on recruitment updates from the Human Resources Department.
Yes, Mayor Asatran, as you connected this request with the budget review process, I'm not sure if we're able to bring a report back before June 4th. That's the budget hearing and adoption date. We'll endeavor to do so, but it's, with all the items that you have listed, it's going to take a while.
So would it, would it be okay if we segmented them off to different reports? Separate reports, one for the budget session, one for larger conversation?
Depending on what, which items you, you want to be heard during the budget.
I definitely want to hear about vacancies based on the departments and the process and the length of time from when a position becomes open to when we hire. And I want to see that by department. And then, I mean, I think those are things, I would assume that, for example, the community outreach program, you know, this is a norm for HR operations altogether. So I don't know if there's a document that outlines how we target specific audiences. But those are, I mean, if they are handy, then they could just be included in the report. I don't know. I would, I would assume that like there's a process chart already that our HR department has. So which one of these items do you think would take long for you to not be able to bring back?
I will have to check with our HR department and see which one will require research and creating these charts and tables.
Okay. So let's, if, if I can get the okay for us to bring this back as, as an item, and then I'm happy to send you the list. And then if you. I'm happy to send you the list, and then if you can, during the next meeting, give us a breakdown of what can be provided when. Does that work?
Yes.
A question.
No. Go ahead. You go first.
I understand the request that vacancy is the time that it takes to fill a vacancy, but does it have to be part of our budget approval? Because I don't know what one has to do with the other.
No, I don't think it has to be part of the budget approval, but I do think that when we're looking at number of vacancies that need to be filled, the, I also want us to take a look at how HR does our processes, their processes, because we keep talking about when we have items that come up and we want, we're trying to make things a priority. But, but then, you know, the response we get is, well, we have X number of vacancies. I'm also looking at, okay, well, as we're deciding the budget, you know, what are systems we have in place that maybe hurdles in filling those vacancies we keep talking about? Or we don't want to fill those vacancies, right? I mean, it's an overall budget discussion, so if you don't know how basically your car's operating, you're, but then you're making an investment on the whole car altogether.
Okay. I, when it comes, like, I may have a better ideas.
Okay.
I understand where you're going with it, but.
My question would be, can this be something prepared as a memo as opposed to a, an action item or, or any other type of item? You know, a memo maybe, sometimes what we've done is have staff write a memo, and then they can even present it in the presentation segment of our agenda, not for action, just to present the information. We can ask questions. And then if there's something out of that that needs to be agendized, like we want to change the policy on XYZ, then it would come back as an action item. Would that be an acceptable approach?
I'm, I'm okay with it. I think as we were all kind of talking about and asking questions on vacancies even during our budget session, the reason that I brought it up back then or at that time was to, for us to get a good sense of how these things operate in order for us to make better decisions. So when they're talking about vacancies, when they're talking about budgets, we have a better understanding of the processes that are in place. And so I'm happy for it to come back as a memo, and if need be, then, you know, we can pick and choose things that we want to be part of the regular session.
Yeah, because it sounds basically informational.
Right. But it might also require some action at some point, so I'm happy for it to start as a.
At some later point. And I have to provide some sort of caution that if it requires changes to certain policies, it overlaps with the purview of the Civil Service Commission. We need to meet and confer with associations, so it gets complicated. But I like the idea of, let's provide the information that you've asked for. We have the vacancies per department, and we have the process, the typical process in place, and the length of time it takes, it's really variable based on the position, based on the level of complexity, based on the demands, based on the availability of panelists. It's, it's a pretty complicated and laborious process, and it's really not one size fits all. But we can provide all that information.
Even when we're talking about, for example, the, I know some of the panels allow for others that are not part of that department or not part of HR to be interviewing. Like, I don't know if those are, these are things that need a charter review, or part of charter change, or like, is this something that's in the books that the council has to decide and we just haven't looked at? So this is the reason why I'm trying to like, maybe we, we get to.
And we can do a study session basically on how HR operations in general run for, for your benefit or your, you know, information.
That would be helpful.
So as a memo?
For, as a memo, and I'll send you the, kind of the longer list of what I'm looking for.
And does that mean we need to vote on it, or we don't need to as a memo?
I think as a memo, we don't do it.
I would suggest that you vote on it since we've had the conversation.
I'll make that motion.
For the memo.
Okay, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Farpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatran.
Yes.
Just want to ask a question for clarification before we go to oral communication.
Sure.
So, because this is a new system for me, the announcements and requests and everything, so I made a request for that airport commission position to be agendized next week. Is that sufficient? That would suffice, or I have to make that motion here in this part of the?
No, Councilmember Farpetian, you've already made a, made a request. We'll add it to next week's new business.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, just for clarification, so that request will be on this, this part of the agenda where the council then decide whether to agendize it fully.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have two speaker cards for oral communications. Our first speaker is Romella Inali, and I guess she has left. And the second one is Antranik Saturian.
He's gone as well.
He's gone as well. Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.[1747.21]